Uh, he, yeah, Hiram.
Well, it is, uh, six o'clock and I call the city council and urban renewal agency joint work session meeting to order this February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. This evening, uh, we're together in this work session to look at the financial year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one comprehensive annual financial report. And that's going to be presented by Marina and company and Tanya's with us this evening. So with that, I, uh, welcome everyone. We've got the council, we've got staff, and we've got, uh, a few members of the budget committee. So from that perspective, I'll turn, uh, the, uh, the time over to our finance director, Jennifer, to introduce the topic tonight. Jennifer?
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, thanks, Mayor Hill. So we're, we're really pleased to have Tanya Moffett with us today. She's, um, the engagement, um, partner that we work with at Marina and Company. And she's, um, we were just talking about it. Um, Marina and Company have been doing our audit the last seven years. We're in our second, um, contract with them. And, um, I guess without any other ado, um, I'll hand it over to Tanya to look at, um. Our plan is to talk about the city audit, the urban renewal audit, as well as, um, the single audit, which is a report on our, um, federal awards for the year.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, everybody. I would like to first off state that it is a pleasure working with the city and with city staff. Um, whenever we ask for things, we get it, full access to anything that we want to look at while we're doing the audit. I'm happy to report for the city of McMinnville's June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Um, because it takes a little while to get everything ready to be audited, get audited, and get the financial statements out the door. Um, so we're looking at June thirty, twenty twenty-one. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of a financial statement opinion that we can give on a financial statement. And the financial statements were dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. So that goes to show you that how much time and effort that city staff puts into the financial statements to make sure that those numbers are accurate and we get out there to start looking at the numbers and all the support to look and make sure that everything's put together well. I'd also like to point out that it is an annual comprehensive financial report for the city. That is actually an awards program through the Government Finance Officers Association. So the city goes above and beyond what is required for the city's financial statements. So some of the things that are included in there that are not included in the standard set of financial statements includes the transmittal letter as well as the statistical section. The statistical section is at the back of the financial statement. It has ten years' worth of historical information. This takes a lot of time and effort for city staff to get that information together because it's not all information that the city actually has on hand because some of that information comes from state agencies. Some of that information comes from the county. And so it takes a lot of time to actually go out, collect, get all of that information to be able to put it in there. I would like to point out that sometimes things might have NA or like for not applicable or they might have zeros when there's been an accounting change. So if it's financial data and sometimes the government accounting standards board has done some significant changes. And so a great example of this is the pension standards. So GASB sixty-eight, the city, um, that was about seven years ago. So if you look at the statistical information and you're looking at that pension liability, you'll see zeros and then all of a sudden there's a number. That's not because it wasn't there or because the information like didn't get put in there. It's because what happened is that there was a change by the Government Accounting Standards Board. So luckily, the last few years, there hasn't been a lot of changes. I think they had pity on all of the auditors and all of the finance department. And they said, hey, you know what? We're not going to have a lot of changes here, um, in this information. So, um, they're, uh, they, they are comparable. It's apples to apples. Um, I'm gonna have to take one second and go off screen. Um, my dog just got trapped herself in another room and is barking. I don't know if you guys can hear her, but legitimately, she's gonna continue to bark the entire hour. She locked herself in a bedroom and nobody else is home except for myself. So give me one second and I will be right back. This is a first for me. Didn't know anyone even put the dog in her kennel. Hysterical because she's locked in the other room.
Um, even our auditors are dog lovers and have, have them joining us on the meetings. So, um.
And I just learned from Jeff that you could do a little dog emoji now. Oh, whoa, there's a whole brand new world in here.
Oh, oh. Gosh, um. Well, um, to, oh, there we go. Tanya's back here.
Sorry. I was like, she's gonna drive me crazy and potentially you. I don't know if you guys could hear her, but she was freaking out because she locked herself in a bedroom. It's supposed to let the door open a crack and then got locked her in there. So I apologize about that. Note to self, lock the dog in her kennel so that she can't trap herself in a bedroom. She's much safer in there. Um, so back to the comprehensive annual financial report. So when the city submits that to the Government Finance Officers Association, independent reviewers go and review it to make sure that that information is top-notch, like that you have all of the information and you go above and beyond. And so, um, unfortunately, due to timing and because the audited financial statements last year for June thirty, twenty twenty didn't get done until late, we unfortunately don't have the certificate for June thirty, twenty twenty. We do anticipate the city will receive it for June thirty, twenty twenty. We also anticipate the city will receive it for June thirty, twenty twenty-one. But I just wanted to let you guys know if you're looking for that certificate, it's not in there. The GFOA is backed up and unfortunately, with all the things that happened with all of the, um, COVID funding, it just made it so that it was a little bit later than normal and you just did not get that back in time. But I just wanted to point that out because this is something that the city goes above and beyond to do, um, to be a part of this certificate program. There is also a little bit of a name change. In the past, it's been called a comprehensive annual financial report. It is now going to be referred to as an annual comprehensive financial report or an ACFR. So, that being said, let's dive into some of these members. If any of you have any questions about the financial statements, please feel free to stop me and ask at any point. Um, so the, for the statement of net position, which is the, essentially, it's the balance sheet. It's the government-wide financial statements. The city has positive net, total net position, um, for one hundred and sixty, fifty-six million dollars. And that, if you're following along, I don't know if you have the financial statements in front of you. It is on page forty-two of the PDF. If you have it printed out, it's physical page thirty-one.
I, I wonder if we shouldn't, um, share a screen. What do, what do folks think? Um, do you want the numbers up on the screen? Okay, I see a head nod there. So, um, I don't know if, if Tanya has rights.
I don't have rights right now. I tried and it didn't.
Okay. Um.
Oh, now I do.
Sweet. Claudia back there doing her magic. Okay.
Yes. So I believe you can see my screen. Um, do you see the, uh, statement?
We're good. Yeah, we're with you. It's pretty small, though. Yeah.
I'm trying to make it bigger. Okay. So, um, I don't know if you can see the little number up here in the left-hand side, but it's page forty-two of the PDF. Again, it's page thirty-one of the financial statement, so you can follow along with me. So the statement of net position, this is essentially the balance sheet. This is the government-wide, so it includes the governmental activity as well as the business-type activity. And then it comes to a total. So this is the total for the city of McMinnville. And then we have the component unit over here, which is McMinnville, um, Water and Light. So the component unit has separately issued financial statements. And then that is included here as a separate column on the government-wide financial statements. The city for total asset has two hundred and twenty-five million. Deferred outflows, this is kind of like an asset. This is something that's special to the government's financial statement. Um, think of it as if it's an asset, um, is two hundred and thirty, or is fourteen million, sorry, for a total assets and deferred outflows of two hundred and thirty-nine. And then liabilities, these are long-term liabilities and current liabilities. So these are things such as debt. Um, it also includes the net pension liability and the other post-employment healthcare benefits. Total liabilities are seventy-six million, almost seventy-seven million. And then deferred outflows of resources, think of these as liabilities as well. Um, and that's about six million. And then net position, this is what in a normal business it'd be called, like owner's equity, equity. Um, for governments, it's called net position. And the city has one hundred and fifty-six, almost one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in, um, net position. So this is the balance sheet. The next page is the statement of activities. This is similar to an income statement, if you're used to looking at that. The problem is with government, we like to do things very, very strangely and differently. So this doesn't look like a traditional income statement. Normally, you'd have revenues and then expenses. Um, but the way that it works is we've got expenses over here and then it's broken down by function. So like general government, public safety, wastewater. Then the next few columns are program revenue, so charges for services. So like, for example, for the business type for the wastewater, most of the revenue for wastewater is coming in as charges for services. And so of eleven million. Then we've got our operating grants and contributions, and then capital grants and contributions. Then when we move down the page, we've got our general revenues. And then unfortunately, the way that this is presented electronically, it's on the next page are those general revenues down here. And this is like, this is property taxes up here. We've got some timber and then transfers in and out. For a total change in net position, which is kind of like, um, change, uh, in net income, it's, uh, the total change for the whole government, for government-wide is two million four hundred thousand. And then total net position is one hundred and fifty-six. I know I'm going through this very, very quickly. Does anybody have any questions on the presentation? Okay. Um, then the next couple pages, we have our governmental funds. This is, um, the balance sheet for governmental funds. So when we think of governmental funds, this is really like our general services that we're not charging services directly for. So this is usually paid for through property taxes or other, um, items. So you can see that we've got our general fund, our airport maintenance, grants and special assessments, transportation fund, debt services, urban renewal, and then total mon major. This is the balance sheet. This is on what's called a modified accrual basis. So it means that there's no capital assets or any debt showing here. That's only showing at the government-wide, which were the last two statements that I showed you. Um, fund balance is like owner's equity. And so you can see here that the governmental fund balance is at sixteen million right here. And then we've got the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. This is more like a traditional income statement. This is closer to a budgetary basis. So we've got our revenues and expenditures and then total fund balance. Then the next few statements, we go to the proprietary fund. So we have the statement of net position. This is similar to the balance sheet and this is on the full accrual basis. So we have our debt in here as well. So for our enterprise funds, we've got net position of ninety-four, uh, million. And then we go to the statement of revenues and expenditure, expenses and changes in net position. So this also has like the change in net position as well for the enterprise funds. And then we have a statement of cash flow. We only have a statement of cash flow only for the enterprise funds or the proprietary funds. Um, this is just a government accounting standards rule. This is nothing. It's a little bit weird because we don't have a cash flow statement for our governmental funds. But this is just based off of the standards that, um, the Government Accounting Standards Board or GASB has set. So that's the, basically, the financial statements for the basic financial statements. Then we get into the notes of the financial statements. I'm gonna go ahead and go back to the required supplementary information and show you the general fund budgetary basis. So for the general fund budgetary basis, we have revenues and it shows the original amount, the final amount. So the original amount is whatever has been approved through the budgeting process. Um, but then if there's any supplemental budgets after your, after the year starts or budget transfers, there might be a change between the original budget and the final budget. So that's why we have two columns here for budget and then actual, the actual amount, what was actually spent or what was received for revenues. And then we have a variance with final budget. So this is just one example. This is the general fund. So it has revenues, expenditures, and then we've got these other things called other financing sources and uses in government, which is like proceeds from capital assets, any changes in debt. So if the city goes out and gets new debt, um, transfers in, transfers out. So if the money's going from one fund to another fund. Um, and so that's what this is. And then there's things that may be different between the budgetary basis and the modified accrual basis. So that's what these two items down here are showing is the inter-fund loan receivable and inter-fund loan payable. And ending basis gap, that's just the modified accrual basis. So that's kind of the, uh, like, presentation of the financial statements. Um, there are some statements in here for the net pension, um, liability. There's also information on the schedule of contributions. One thing to note, the largest estimate in the city's financial statement is the net pension liability. This is something that the city does not calculate themselves. They get this from an actuary. And it's based off of life expectancies, duh, um, discount rates, all of that kind of stuff. Theoretically, as long as the city is making their statutory required contributions. So what this number is right here, this three-point-seven million, that is what the city pays to Oregon PERS. So on an annual basis, the city gets told how much that they have to pay to be able to cover that pension liability and to be able to have, cover all of the current employees, what their pension is, liability is going to be in the future. So currently, the city is paying three-point-seven million a year to PERS for all of the employees. This is twenty-four-point-two-nine percent of the city's covered payroll. So the city's covered payroll, that includes like wages, so what the employee actually takes home. That includes social security. It includes all those payroll taxes and things as well. Um, but we just wanted to point out the statutorily required contributions that that will cover that pension liability.
Uh, Tanya?
Yes?
Does that covered payroll also include medical benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
It does not. It does not. Jennifer's saying it does not. Sorry.
Okay. So that is primarily, uh, payroll and taxes associated, including social security? Okay.
Um, I'll show you what that pension liability is just because it's usually, it's one of the most confusing pieces on a government's financial statements. I'm gonna go back to the PDF, page forty-two, which is, this is the government-wide statement of net position, like the balance sheet. That pension liability that is calculated by the actuary that's required by the Government Accounting Standards Board is thirty-six million. We also have another one for other post-employment healthcare benefits. This is another estimate on the financial statement, and that's one-point-three million. Um, this, this pension liability is highly volatile. And what I mean by that is that it changes drastically depending on what the discount rate is. So what rate they anticipate that they're going to get, um, what, what rate they think that they're going to have, um, earnings on, uh, like, um, it's like an interest rate, kind of. So this is a sensitivity analysis that shows if that discount rate is decreased by one percent, the city's liability would increase to fifty-one million. If that discount rate was increased by eight-point-two, the amount of the pension liability would be twenty, twenty million. So as you can see, this is like a huge estimate that just one percentage point can make a huge difference and fluctuate it back and forth between where that amount is. So I just like to point that out because it's the largest estimate on the city's financial statements and it fluctuates a lot, um, there. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen for just a minute and see if anybody has any, any questions on the city's financial statements before I move into the urban renewal as well as the, um, single audit.
So any questions for Tanya?
I know I'm throwing a lot of information at you.
It looks like we have no questions, Tanya, so we can move over to the urban renewal.
Okay. Perfect. So the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency is what's considered a blended component unit of the city of McMinnville. So what that means is that it has its own set of financial statements. But when you look at the city's complete financial statements, it's included in those numbers as well. So when you're looking at those government-wide numbers that I was just showing you, the urban renewal is included in that. But we also have a separately issued financial statement. It's just the way the rules work in the state of Oregon that the urban renewal agency has to have their own set of financial statements. So for the urban renewal agency, we also issued an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of a financial statement opinion that we can give on a financial statement. So again, kudos to the finance department for all of their hard work, especially with urban renewal agencies where there's money going back and forth between the, um, agency and the city. Sometimes those transactions can get very complicated from an accounting standpoint. And we did not have any findings or any concerns with any of the ways that they treated any of those transactions. They were done appropriately.
Well, and also, I just, I just wanna jump in. Um, while we appreciate the kudos, um, we do think we do a nice job and work hard, um, at our accounting, um, activities. But this stuff, we wouldn't get clean audit opinions if everyone across the city wasn't paying attention and treating the financial activities of their departments with care. Um, because the auditors are looking across the board. It's not just at the records that we happen to have in our department. So, um, just huge appreciation across the board, across the city. Um, we wouldn't have these, um, these positive opinions, um, without everyone's participation. So just wanted to toss that out.
And that's especially true with like the single audit as well as the individual departments that they're coding things correctly. Because one of the things that we do is we go in and test and look at the expenses and make sure they're putting them in the correct budget categories and things like that, um, on a sample basis. So that is true. We also go out and look at other departments and talk to other departments as well. It's not just the finance department that sees us. Um, the finance department tends to not be as scared of us because they see us all the time. The other departments are like, wait a second, why are the auditors knocking on my door? But no, everybody within the city is great to work with and whenever we ask for stuff, we get it, um, very quickly. So I'm gonna share my screen again and show the, um, urban renewal agency. I believe I'm showing that. Can somebody shake their head?
Yes.
See that? Thank you. Um, so for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency, this is a much shorter report. Um, we have the independently elected officials. So if somebody's name's spelled wrong, this is not a part of our audit. We don't audit the introductory section. So if somebody's name's spelled wrong, it's not my fault. I like to joke about that, but, um, we've got our independent auditors report that says that we have a clean opinion. The management discussion and analysis, I didn't talk about this on the city, but the management discussion and analysis, we do not audit this. But what we do is we look at it to compare it to the actual audited financial statement information to make sure that it's consistent within that. Um, the management discussion and analysis is probably one of my favorite parts of the financial statements. And part of the reason that I like it so much is because it has two years' worth of information. And it talks about like the significant changes and the significant differences between the prior years. So for example, you can see right here that the statement of net position, it's got the twenty-twenty and then the twenty-twenty. And it talks about the changes there and why that happened. And then we go to the governmental activities for the changes in net position, same thing, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. So it has a high level, um, and it cuts out a lot of the like detailed information, but it has that high-level information. And so I really like the management discussion and analysis. For the basic financial statements, again, we have a statement of net position. This is very similar to a balance sheet. Theirs is a lot easier to look at and understand because there's a lot less going on. You don't have four columns. We only have one because we only have one set of activities and it's governmental activities for the urban renewal agency. Whereas with the city, we have the governmental, the proprietary, the total, and then we have the component unit for McMinnville Water and Light. So it just gets more jumbled. This is a lot more straightforward to see. So we've got our total assets of two-point-two million, total liabilities of one-point-seven, and then net position of four-hundred-and-thirty-two, um, thousand. Then for the statement of activities, we've got our expenses here and then our general revenues for property taxes because with urban renewal agencies, the majority of their revenue is coming in from property taxes because that's what they're formed through. That's on the full accrual basis. Then when we move on to the balance sheet, this is the governmental activities. So we've got the two funds. We've got the urban renewal fund as well as the urban renewal debt service fund. This is on a modified accrual basis, which means that you don't see the debt on here and you don't see the capital assets on here. Um, and then you've got a reconciliation that shows kind of the differences between the modified accrual and the full accrual. Then for the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, this is like the income statement. And this looks more like a traditional income statement. It has revenues, then expenses, then our other financing sources and uses, and the ending fund balance. We have all these fancy terms in government. We've got fund balance, which is a modified accrual. And then we have net position, which I was talking about earlier, which is for full accrual. So I apologize, they're basically the same thing. They just have some different components to them. And then we have the notes to the financial statements. And then I'm gonna pop back to page thirty-four of the PDF or, um, twenty-four. Here is another example of a budgetary statement that we've got. This is the urban renewal fund, so any of you that work closely with the budget. Um, these original numbers are what gets, um, adopted and approved, um, through the budgeting process. And then final, or any of those changes that happen throughout the year. So if there's a supplemental budget or a budget transfer during the year, then we've got our actuals. And then we're comparing those, um, budgeted numbers to the actuals to see if there's any variances, um, positive or negative. So that's what the budgetary statements look like. And then the other, we have one other report that I didn't talk about for the first. And then the other, we have one other report that I didn't talk about for the first presentation, but we have the independent auditors' on, report on compliance and internal controls of our financial reporting. This is a report that the Oregon State Legislature has municipal auditors put in the financial statements and tests specific things that are not necessarily financial-related. So a great example is ORS two-seventy-nine, which is public purchasing. So we look to make sure that when the city goes and does a project, that they ha, go out for bid, as well as that they, um, have a selection process so that everybody has an opportunity, it's posted in the paper, everybody has an opportunity to bid on those projects, um, and then there's a process that they go through. So I'm happy to report that there's no, uh, we didn't have any compliance findings for any of those items. Another one is the budget, um, Oregon budget law as well. So does anybody have any questions for me on the urban renewal financial statements?
Let's go ahead and open it up. Any questions for Tanya? The urban renewal is a much, uh, smaller budget in, in its scope, but, uh, and we are probably a little more, uh, critically, uh, attuned to what's happening there, but... Okay, I don't see anything, Tanya. Let's move on to the single audit.
Okay. So, um, before I show the financial statements, a single audit is what is required any time that the city spends over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal funds. So a lot of you have probably heard about all of these federal funds that have been coming out for the last few years. So we've had the, um, coronavirus emergency fund, we've had the coronavirus relief fund, or CRF. Also seen like PPP funding, we've seen all of these funding, these funding sources that have been coming out from the feds where they're giving, um, municipal entities, nonprofits, individual businesses, money, um, to try to help through the COVID-nineteen, um, timeframe. The city is no exception. They received some of those funding. Um, I am happy to report that we have a clean or an unmodified opinion for the single audit. Um, I'm going to show you here in just one second, if I can get my screen to share. Um, you should be looking at the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, so this is from the single audit. And what it does is it lists out what agencies that the city receives funding from, and how much the expenses were for the current fiscal year. So this was from July first of twenty-twenty through June thirty of twenty-twenty-one. Um, the total expenditures that the city had for federal awards was one-million-five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five. Um, so that's what the city spent during that timeframe. The, one of the things that we do is we don't test all of this, we test a sample of this. And so the way that, um, the rules work is that we select what is called a major program. Um, sometimes you can have more than one major program, so that's the area that you focus a lot of your time on for the audit. There's some risk pieces of it, there's also some dollar value pieces of it for, uh, making that selection. Um, new programs, so something like the Corona Relief Fund, so CRF, which is right here, um, goes into considering what major programs you're going to look at. So for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-one, we audited as a major program, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, or CRF. Um, so we audited this amount right here, the seven-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, and I will tell you that we had no findings or, um, recommendations regarding this, which is amazing. So we have audited a lot of other entities that have coronavirus relief funds. We had a lot of findings here, because what happened is the funding came out and the rules were still being written, like what you can spend it on, how you can spend it, um, what's allowable, what's not allowable. I have to give props to those charged with governance, which would be most of you, and city management for waiting to spend those funds, um, until there was a little bit more guidance, because a lot of other entities spent the funds and then realized that they spent it on unallowable, um, expenses. So, um, what you guys did made it so that you didn't have any findings. Um, and then the people that were in charge of spending these funds, they were paying attention to what the federal grant requirements were, um, which was really hard, because I think we had forty-six different versions of rules around the coronavirus relief funds. Like, so the, uh, Federal Department of Treasury said, here's the rules, here's what you're supposed to use it on. And then they said, oh, wait a second, we have a change, and so then they'd give us new rules. And they wouldn't tell you what they changed, they'd just give you a whole new piece of paper and say, here's the new rules. Then they'd do it again. I mean, I, I honestly, I believe it was forty-six different times that they changed the rules specifically around the coronavirus relief fund. So it's not a big surprise to me that we did have so many findings around this funding. Um, but I'm happy to report that we didn't have any findings for the city. Um, this is one of the areas that it's a very easy to miss some of those major steps and major things that the federal government wants the auditors to look at, um, because there's so many different little pieces to the compliance of these federal funds, when you spend them and when you receive them. So, um, this just goes to show how good of a job the city's team did.
Um, I, while you've got it, the page right where you have it now, I just, I wanted to point out, so that the column, the, the three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar column, those are funds that we pass through the, to other agencies. So what those are, um, the fifty-nine-thousand, um, with the FEMA Public Assistance Grants, all of that money went to YCAP to support, um, the non-congregate housing, um, initiatives that they, um, were carrying out during that fiscal year. And the number above it is predominantly the amount of money that we passed through to McMinnville Water and Light, um, during, uh, the pan, during this fiscal year for, um, this particular funding source. Um, so just wanted to call those out, what that money meant.
Yeah, and one, one page below explains a little bit more about how much was spent. Did somebody have another comment or question?
No, I just wanted to thank, uh, Jennifer for pointing that out, uh, the pass-throughs.
Yeah, there's also a lot of rules around pass-through funding that are tricky as well, um, because, uh, when you pass through money to a subrecipient, is what they're called, uh, there are a lot of boxes that you have to check. Uh, you have to have a grant agreement in place with them, and then you have to make sure that you're doing what's considered monitoring, so you have to make sure that they're spending the funding appropriately. So it's not like you just hand them the funding and then just walk away. You have to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do with it appropriately. So any time that you have subrecipients, it makes your, um, single audit, audit a lot more complicated, it also makes your grant compliance a lot more complicated because there's a lot of boxes that you have to check.
Yeah, and actually, in particular, I'd like to emphasize how, um, how great a partner YCAP has been throughout, um, the whole pandemic period, and, um, just their command of all of the expenditures and what they were doing was, um, just, it was truly impressive. And so the fact that the city is continuing to partner in even, um, you know, much more significant, uh, projects with them going forward is just, from a, from the financial perspective, um, my confidence level in their, um, attention to detail, compliance work is, um, quite high. They, they are fabulous partners.
Uh, Remy has a question. Council President?
Hi, sorry. My, sorry, my computer's being finicky. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank, thank you both for being here and for this presentation and the exceptionally thorough report. I just wanted to pop in at this point in the conversation, um, because I was lucky enough to be a fly on the wall in the early development of that program and to see the working relationship before, between our city administration and YCAP leadership. And, um, there was great, um, uh, attention to detail and, um, um, concern or a, a positive version of concern, just a, a great diligence in, um, communication and thoroughness as, uh, a, as those plans were developed. And so I, uh, just want to kind of add my voice to, um, the, the, the kind of applause that's being thrown here right now, uh, uh, at, at the way that that happened. And, um, and also to thank you for highlighting it, and because I think it's fairly impactful when we think about the reports we've had recently and the impact, the real-life impact that that made on our community, um, it's, it's fairly amazing. So thank you all.
Thank you, Remy. Any other comments right now? I, I think we're to a point where, uh, Tanya, you finished the single audit, have you not? Okay, this, this is an opportunity to, um, um, ask any other clarifying questions. Not seeing any. I, I can report to the council and those members of the Budget Committee, the Audit Committee, uh, met with, uh, Tanya and Jennifer, uh, just prior to this meeting at four o'clock, and we had an opportunity to do, uh, a deeper dive in some, some of this information. And, um, you know, I, I just share from my perspective, having been through this process now, this is, I think, my twenty-ninth year, uh, either being on the Budget Committee, Council, or Mayor, and, uh, I'm amazed at, uh, a couple of things. Number one, the quality of our auditors, uh, and Marina and Company has been such a joy to work with. Uh, I've talked to Jennifer, I've talked to staff, and they come in and they're helpful, and our staff is, uh, they've got trust in them, and which makes us, uh, much more open to do everything that we need to do. And so from that perspective, secondarily, uh, our finance, uh, department, uh, under Jennifer's direction. This audit was, um, was undertaken during a time where we were administering ARPA funds, no easy challenge in itself. Uh, we were doing, uh, uh, core services, uh, we were putting the budget together, uh, the list goes on and on, as we're looking at new sources of revenue, most of that falls on the finance department, and then municipal corp falls on, on Jennifer also. So when you add all of that up, a Herculean, uh, efforts by that department and specifically Jennifer, you know, I know she is, uh, uh, she is logging many, many hours beyond a normal work week just to accomplish the things that, uh, need to be accomplished. And this all happened primarily with being down one person in a department that isn't, uh, um, you know, as, you know, as we, as we look at grade and comp, the, the, it's not the compensation, it's just we don't have as much, um, su, support there to do all the things we're trying to do. So I wanted to take just a moment and, uh, share my recognition for, uh, this department and all they do for us, and then on top of all that, the questions that you, uh, also, uh, asked them on a daily, weekly basis. Uh, I'm going to shoot over to Zach. Zach?
I was, uh, my hands were clapping.
Okay. It's so hard because you've got that cream color in the background.
I know.
It, it's, it's hard. Uh, I think one other thing, and I'm, I'm stepping out of maybe protocol, we were, uh, Tanya shared with, um, with the Audit Committee a little directional change they're going to do. Tanya, is that appropriate to share with this group, or would you like to do it a different, okay, go ahead, so that they're aware of some things that are pending changes at Marina and Company?
So, um, we, our firm is pivoting away from financial auditing services, and we are moving more towards advisory or consulting services to government. So we're staying in government. We see that there are, um, other, uh, municipal auditors that can service municipalities in the manner that we are. We are going to continue to, um, fulfill our contracts since we had just signed one. Jennifer was very happy that we had just renegotiated and re-signed a new contract. Uh, so we will stay with the city, uh, through fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, um, but we're going to be focusing on helping municipalities with those bigger pictures. So like a great example is we're working with Washington County on their solid waste, um, consulting and coming up with equitable rates. So just because somebody has a larger garbage can doesn't mean that they should be subsidizing the smaller garbage cans, because you might have a multifamily that maybe has three kids with diapers, and they need that larger garbage can, um, but maybe they can't afford it. And then they either are dumping it in their backyard, or maybe they're dumping it illegally somewhere. And so, um, trying to come up with equitable rates for all individuals within, um, Washington County. So we're going to be doing more projects like that, where hopefully we can have a larger impact on communities and help with those things that keep, you know, you all up at night. What are those projects that maybe can't get off, get off of the back plate because you need the time and the resources? Um, so our firm is putting together a group of individuals, we're not just all CPAs, so Certified Public Accountants, we also have engineers on staff. So like, for example, um, helping with project management or things like, uh, projections, when you're going to have to replace a bridge, when you're going to have to replace a building, something like that. So we helped City of Wilsonville come up with a, um, model that basically can be changed if circumstances change, because a lot of times us consultants, we come in and we give these beautiful reports, but they're a point in time, and they can't be used, um, they're, they're obsolete within six months. And so we're trying to come up with solutions that are helpful so that then, like for City of Wilsonville, they can use it for planning for, um, budgeting purposes, and they also can use it for when they go out for debt. So we're trying to do projects like that that are going to be more helpful and have a greater impact on our community. Um, and this also gets our team away from working the crazy busy, um, like peaks and valleys. Think of like a tax department, like how they have a busy time right before tax season. We don't do taxes, but, um, we have a busy time right before December thirty-first, trying to get all these audits finished. Um, and so this will give our team a little bit more, a better work-life balance, um, as well. And so, and then we can also help our communities with those, uh, bigger picture items.
Thank you, uh, Tanya. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm one with Jennifer that is excited that we have you through two-thousand-and-twenty-five. That working relationship has been phenomenal, and your expertise and your ability to communicate and be of assistance is, is recognized also. Uh, I will ask for any questions the last time?
Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Zach, go ahead. Oh, thanks. Um, I just wanted to know, how, how do these changes in your company affect your ability to service the account through two-thousand-and-twenty-five?
It won't affect us at this point, um, because we are going to stay current with all of the standards. I'm on the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants State and Local Government Expert Panel, uh, so I'm in the room with the Government Accounting Standards Board advocating for the smaller governments, because a lot of the people in the room are all from larger governments or larger firms like Dullit and Tush, KPMG. So I am advocating on your behalf, so it will not affect us. Um, we're going, we are, have other municipalities that we are going to be keeping as well that we're under contract with to finish, um, out the remainder of our contracts on the financial audit piece. Uh, so we're excited to be able to still work with you, and hopefully after we're done fulfilling that contract, we can work with you on some of these bigger picture items.
Thank you, Sal, for that question. Uh, Zach?
Sorry, mouse disappeared. Um, it wasn't a, a total question, but since we have a minute, I just wanted to lay a comment and an observation. Um, and my mush-brain, um, doesn't do a good job of recalling, uh, this process every year, but, um, this year, the, what jumped out to me in the documentation provided was, um, sort of the year-over-year since two-thousand-and-twelve, ending fund balances of each of the departments, um, and it was really valuable and And it was really valuable information to chart that history and see those time after time, especially in context of finishing in the conversations around new revenue and sort of confirmation of what we know as well, of our fiscal position and what we need to do to take us forward for those next, you know, we're looking 10 years in the past, but 10 years in the future. And it helped with those conversations as we go out and talk about new revenue and see those last changes. And to see there's no big giant, you know, landmines or other things. And just as confirmation of charting our financial history, I see no, it's all right here. There's no scariness, nothing to hide behind, and a clean audit to have to back us. It's really nice to have now. And just with special thought to these last, you know, since 2012, year-over-year of the departments was super helpful to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I see no further questions. So, Tanya, thank you for the good work and the presentation and the time you've spent with us this evening. Thank the Budget Members that are on the phone and the Council. And so it is 6:51, and I will now adjourn the joint work session, and we will go into our City Council regular meeting at 7:00. Thank you all.
Thank you.
February 2022 as Black History Month, whereas the City of McMinnville is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community. And whereas the official name of Black History Month 2022 is Black Health and Wellness, which acknowledges the legacy of Black scholars and medical practitioners in the Western medicine, but also in other ways of knowing throughout the African diaspora. The 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, initiatives that Black communities have done to be well. And whereas Black Americans have made invaluable contributions in Oregon's economic, political, spiritual, and social development while maintaining and promoting their own unique culture and history. And whereas we acknowledge and denounce the history of structural and institutional racism among Black Americans in Oregon and throughout the United States, which has directly resulted in social, economic, health, and other disparities that persist to this day. And whereas Black Americans, for generations, have sought to prevail against racial violence, injustice, and inequities, which lead the potential to equality in this country. And whereas Black History Month serves to celebrate the accomplishments, the culture and contribute of the Black community, which honors Black History Month. And whereas we, as a community, must work together to end discrimination, to achieve true equality for Black Oregon's and build McMinnville where all residents can realize their full potential. Therefore, I, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby present, proclaim February 22, 2022 as Black History Month. In witness thereof, I have affixed and set my hand this, the 8th day of February in the year 2022. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. Okay, that takes us next to comments from community members. And this is the opportunity, anyone may speak on topics other than a quasi-judicial or litigation judicial, quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. We will allow three minutes per individual to speak to the Council. Raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak. Announce yourself with your name and your address. And so at this point, I will turn it over to Claudia to see if we have anyone that would like to speak. I know that we've gotten some public testimony that was a part of our packet. So Claudia, if you can update us and tell us if we have anyone that would like to speak.
So as you mentioned, Matt Johnson and Jack Windle wrote comments, and I emailed them to you, and those will be made part of the packet tomorrow. Our first speaker is Patrick Evans on Zoom.
Patrick, it's good to hear from you. Go ahead. Patrick, you're muted if you're... Okay, go ahead, Patrick, you're unmuted. Maybe we'll come back to Patrick. Go ahead, Claudia, anyone else is signed up?
Yes, next is Liz Marla Stein.
Liz?
Okay. Okay. Hi, everyone. Is Patrick on now?
I hope that I am. Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yeah, Patrick, we'll come back to you right after Liz speaks. So go ahead, Liz.
Well, if it's all right, I would like to follow Patrick, because he has some important information that I would like you all to hear before I speak. Is that okay?
Okay. Let's go back to Patrick. Go ahead, you've got three minutes, Patrick.
Sorry about that. My comments are exclusively toward the ordinance change that affects homeless camping. And that, since that is on the agenda, according to the rules, I will make my comments at that point in time and not unrelated to anything else.
Just a moment. Amanda, is it best to take testimony during that discussion, or can we take that during comments during this time?
There's no scheduled public hearing, Mayor, so on that matter, so you can take comments now.
Right. Patrick, we're not going to have a public hearing, so feel free to go ahead and give your comments. I will start your time over. Go ahead, and anyone else that wants to speak on the ordinance that we're talking about this evening can feel free to do it during the citizens' comments. So go ahead, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification?
Yes.
I just want to make sure the public understands the significance of no public hearing versus, you know, the possibility that we may have a first reading and a second reading on this. Amanda, would you be willing to, just kind of before Patrick testifies, just share the distinction there, like what the action will be taken later so that people understand?
Thank you.
So, so the matter on the agenda tonight is a first reading of ordinance 5109, where the Council will hear a staff report and then make a determination, have a discussion and make a determination whether or not the Council wants to approve it upon first reading. If it's approved unanimously, then we can move to a second reading. Otherwise, it'll be held, if it's approved but not unanimously, it'll be moved to a second reading at the next council meeting on the 22nd. And if it's not approved, then it won't move forward.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Sal. So getting all the technical things out of the way on this important discussion, let's go ahead, Patrick.
All right. Well, thank you very much for letting me speak this evening. I am not going to go over the letter that was included in your packet. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read that. I will say that I did have an excellent meeting with Captain Jasko today from the police department. And she and the young man from planning clarified a lot of issues that I had reached out earlier in the year to understand as far as the enforcement process. And I'd like to thank Captain Jasko for her time this afternoon. The issue still remains that we do not have a plan in place to deal with homelessness in Mcmindill or Yamhill County. And enforcement and requiring the homeless to move effectively every twelve to fifteen hours does not solve the problem. And I'm not, I'm not in any way necessarily being critical of the efforts that are ongoing, but merely to say that it would probably be a good item of business for both the city and the county to examine some of the other approaches, particularly in my own mind, Santa Clara County, California, that has come up with a very in-depth plan, integrating all departments, both county, city, and nonprofit organizations, and implementing a plan that has apparently made great dents in their homeless population. As I said in my memo, we have an immediate deficit of shelter beds in Mcmindill. I did not do an analysis of Newburgh, but presumption is that the same situation exists there. The problem is, without those adequate shelter beds, without a lot of the other programs in place, we are walking right in front of the barrel of a gun over the next few years. Homelessness, everyone agrees, will increase and will increase dramatically. And I'm here to urge the city, and I will separately urge our Board of Commissioners at the county, to get on board and get all of the help they can from the community in developing a plan with good metrics and good involvement from all of the affected actors, city and county-wide. That's really all that I have to say this evening. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Patrick, and thanks for your good work. Liz, now go over to Liz. Go ahead, Liz. Introduce yourself. You're muted.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay. Liz Marlia Stein. I live at fifteen twenty-five Northeast Eighteenth Street here in Mcmindill. And I've been working on this homeless, geez, fifteen years at least. And I'm, I'd like to ditto what Patrick says. I think that we are a people who can come up with, I mean, we're a community, who can come up with, with just solutions rather than Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid. I think, I think we're smart enough that we can do that. There's, I mean, I'm willing to, to help do that. I've been working for, like I said, over fifteen years. And, and I'm just, it's just, it breaks my heart, breaks my heart to see that our, our houseless people continue to die. And I just think we, we can solve this. I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Claudia?
Next, we have Howie Harkema.
Thank you. Howie, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff, for allowing us to comment. I think it is beyond time to figure something out for the Turtle Dove shelters. I truly do. There must be some land, whether it be a commercial land, or city-owned land, or parcels here and there, not unlike the Safe Overnight Car Park Program, that are people that are in the Turtle Dove shelters. I believe there's thirty-four of them in town now. We need to come up with a solution so that these people have a place to be, and, and other people that can, can manage those situations to make sure that they're following all the rules, and help clean up garbage, and things like that. I think it's high time that we find an outlet for the people in the Turtle Doves and go beyond where we are right now. That's my take on all of this.
Thank you, Howie. And again, thanks for all your hard and good work. We had our mayors coming together, meeting last week, and, and continuing to work on that. Next, Claudia?
Next, we have John Mead.
Welcome, John.
Hello. Hey, welcome. Pardon me. Thank you for hearing us out today and talking about this issue and bringing it in front of the council. I think it's great that some measures are being put in place to have some separation between camping and abandoned vehicles in policy. And I think there's some longer-term things in place, a navigation center that hopefully is going to be coming online in not too long. But in the meantime, I am curious if the city could come up with seven sites of city-owned property, parcels of land that the city owns, that doesn't put Turtle Dove campers on the side of the street. That could be safe parcels. And granted, that could cause the need for sanitation requirements, but I just wonder if the cost of police enforcement of moving homeless people out of their camping spots into different camping spots, that's, that's police time, and that's, that's expensive. And if the city could come up with seven sites that could host three campers each, that's twenty-one of the thirty-four. I'm guessing that there's going to be, you know, some of the Turtle Dove campers that can find their own places that don't need, you know, city-sponsored places. But the cost of a portable toilet is, is, you know, a month's payment of a portable toilet is, is probably the equivalent of twenty minutes of police time. So I do wonder how much, how much time and money the city is putting into policing that could be put into mapping out an effort of here's some designated camping zones of city-owned land that Turtle Dove campers could be in. And so I would throw that out to the, to the council and appreciate your, your time and consideration.
Thank you, John. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Matt Johnson.
Go ahead, Matt. Matt, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
I'm not showing him on Zoom, so we may have to come back to him.
Okay, go ahead.
Next, we have Evelyn Cedrantes Lamont.
Evelyn?
And...
There we go. If that's, if that's Evelyn, you're, you're not muted now.
Okay. I was trying to get my picture, but...
There we go. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for giving me a few minutes. I was homeless for about three weeks, not recently, but back in the seventies, and had to live in my car with my husband and being pregnant. And so we parked. And so I can't even imagine being woken up in, after twelve hours, or anytime, having to get up, out of the car, in the rain, for whatever weather it was out there. And yeah, it just sounds so inhumane, you know, because poverty is, it happens to good people. And so I'm, I'm just, I don't want to reiterate what everyone else has said, because we do need some kind of solution, not something that is moving five hundred feet, or a thousand feet, or any of that. We're a wonderful community. I've lived here for forty-five years, and have seen the, the different changes that has happened to our community from being a person of color, and being poor myself, and helping one another as neighbors. You know, if there was a fire, we would definitely go in and help our neighbors, no questions asked of, are you poor, are you living in your car, or whatever. And so I just feel that we just all need some deep awareness of what's happening, and the suffering that happens to, to people, and to be able to help and relieve them. And so, and not have the stereotypes that we all have been raised with, or, you know, have heard. And so, yeah, I just feel that we all can do something. You're all were smart people. And we have, this is a, Mcmindill is a destination place now. And we don't even have a public bathroom downtown. I just don't understand that. You know, you have to buy a cup of coffee or someplace to get a bathroom. So there's just a lot of issues that are coming up with the people that are most vulnerable. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thanks, Evelyn. Claudia, next?
Next, we have Mike Burr.
Mike, welcome.
Okay. Am I on, or?
You are, Mike. So identify yourself and your address and...
Okay. Hi, I'm Mike Burr. And I live at one five six six zero Mountview Way in Mcmindill. I'm a member of First Baptist Church, and have been on the leadership team for serving the homeless for the last five or six years, and also running the shelter program that we have. And want to thank you for being able to address you this, this evening, and for this opportunity. I know that the council is trying to walk a line between maintaining livability of the city and serving some of the most vulnerable citizens that, that, that we have. And I know it's not an easy task. I'd like to suggest this, this evening that we're approaching the wrong problem with, with the wrong tools. And over the years, I've had numerous opportunities to use Mcmindill Police Department and encounter them. And I've always been highly impressed with the professionalism of the officers and, and, and the, and the caring. I think it's time that we started looking at other ways of addressing homelessness than through the criminal justice system. And it's a really highly inefficient, expensive way to address the, the problem. Not only do we have police time, we have court time, we have administrative time, we have mental health ramifications, we have physical health ramifications. The costs are, I think, extraordinary. And one of the things I'd like to suggest is that the city start looking at a service model instead of a criminal justice model. And just one, one example, I know one of the difficulties with parked cars is the amount of trash, the amount of extraneous stuff that, that, that gathers. I'm real familiar with it because I clean a bunch of it up. And, and the fact is, is, is the people who are living in, in cars don't have anything to do but to put stuff out on, on, on the parking strip. And there are no sanitation or trash services. And I'm wondering what would happen if we looked at providing sensible trash service for the, the, the people who are parking on, on the streets. Have them move every seventy-two hours if, if, you know, if we have to. But the thousand-foot limit, keep them within a couple blocks. I'd urge the city to do a cost-benefit analysis of what it would do to, to...
Five seconds, Mike. Five seconds, Mike.
Okay. That's hard to do for a preacher.
I know. But you, you got your point across. Thank you so very much.
Yeah. Look at a cost benefit, a, a analysis of criminal justice versus service.
Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Tynan Pierce.
Tynan? Welcome? Welcome?
Hello, everyone. It's Tynan Pierce, still living at seven hundred Northeast Fourteenth Street. So I'm really, really excited to see so many other people speaking out tonight. It's really heartwarming and encouraging to hear the voices of the community speaking with compassion, and urging creativity, and the idea of coming together as community members to support each other. I am happy to reiterate the items that have already been brought up. I think it's really important to speak in concert, and to bring ideas to council, and show that there's not just one voice, but there are many voices speaking these same concerns. And, you know, the, the letter that Pat Evans laid out was, was beautifully written, and really highlighted a lot of the issues that I think many of us have brought to council over the course of the past few years. And specifically, I mean, I know you've heard the, the Supreme Court case, that has been brought up in previous council hearings. And it really comes down from personally that there continues to be a reliance on criminalization of houselessness people. And even with this new model, there'd still be, you know, fines that could be levied of maximums of five hundred or twelve hundred and fifty dollars, depending on, you know, which of the violations had occurred. And that's, it just can't be the answer. I'm also really glad that somebody already brought up the idea that there's not even a public restroom. There's no public facilities for people. So you literally have to buy something, even the feel to use the restroom. Something that all of us have, you know, Michelle, my wife and I, we both have talked about this numerous times with other community members, that there's, seems to be a continued overt focus on making Mcmindill business-focused and tourist-focused. And while many of our jobs, I work in the tourist sector, so many of our jobs do rely on a healthy tourism infrastructure, that does not mean that we need to put other people out to pasture and try to sweep them under the rug. I mean, the Turtle Dove shelters in and of themselves are an amazing act of generosity and coming together from community members. But that in and of itself is a Band-Aid. I mean, we're still, that's not, that's a temporary solution. And the idea that within the framework of the resolution that you all are putting forward is, you know, talking to, you know, getting like... getting like blinkers and lights for these trailers that may park safely on the streets is absurd. The idea that we're going to focus on safe street parking as opposed to finding actual safe parking that is not on a street is, is just absurd. Uh, I agree and wholeheartedly think that the idea of asking people to move 1,000 feet every 24 to 72 hours is, is just not humane. Additionally, we're still missing out the fact that these people have to leave in their shelters. They do have it just for overnight. And then they're just wandering around the city in the cold and in the rain or in the hot and in the heat and the sun. And, and I just really see a lot of opportunity for the city to do better. And I understand that not all of you love hearing the criticism from your community members. And I get that it's hard to be criticized. And I understand that in the future, there's the Navigation Center. And I appreciate that in today's political climate that you are focusing on having a Black History Month that's incredibly valuable. So it's not to say that criticism means that you're all doing everything wrong, but it means that there's room to do better. And so within this framework, when we see a $300 million budget going towards the, you know, the bypass, it seems like we could, or $3 million, not 300 million, a $3 million budget going towards the bypass, that we could allocate more funds to help out our city as it is and our community members that are the most underserved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tynan. Claudia?
Next, we have Courtney Terry.
Courtney?
Hello, good evening. Thank you, um, for your time and hello to the mayor and councillors. Um, I think a lot of the opinion, uh, things that have been said today by other people, um, they did so more eloquently than I could. And I understand that there is an aspect of preaching to the choir, but I really like, um, what Tynan said about, um, going and lifting. And, uh, I myself am a very, I'm not afraid to say, um, emotional person, especially when it comes to my compassion for others. But I, this time, would just like to again reiterate the importance of, um, the economic benefits and, um, those other aspects of having somewhere in our community that could be orchestrated by the city with help from other organizations. Um, how much that would mean for our houseless community members to have a place where they can stay and they can, um, find some respite. And for anyone that has, uh, we, the library, uh, it's very popular with libraries, but we've done the Ryan Dowd training. And, you know, if it's not the economics, you can also look at the science and that, um, folks in unstable housing conditions are constantly, um, under stress. And this affects them in physical, emotional and mental ways. And where I'm going with all of this is that even if the city is able to provide just a few places where people could safely remain, that would lessen the burden enough for them to be able to find other ways to participate in the community. I'm not speaking as a librarian right now, but I happen to know that, uh, we at the library are very helpful with resumes and, uh, job applications for folks. And I know that there are other organizations in the community that do fellow things. And so, um, my comment is, as you're making the decision, I would just like to respectfully remind you that, you know, um, reducing the criminality of these Turtle Dove shelters and where they can exist will eventually, in the long run, benefit our community as a whole in many ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Courtney. Next, Claudia?
Next, we have Cherry Haas.
Go ahead, Cherry.
I'll meet myself. So I asked Claudia for a few minutes' time, actually one minute's time, to say, move your things from the city of St. Paul to all of you who have supported us in this last week and especially to Chief Labor. So I have been in awe of the organizational capability of the fire districts and getting, uh, ready for 500 fire trucks and 5,000 people at the rodeo grounds, uh, in St. Paul. And if you guys were running the evacuation from Afghanistan, I'm sure we'd have been a little bit different. Anyway, thank you, Chief, for all the organizational efforts for your compatriots. And you're the only one I can say thank you to right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Cherry. And our hearts go out to the loss in St. Paul. Next, Claudia?
I'll do one more call for Matt Johnson.
Matt?
And he would be the last one, Mayor.
Okay. I don't see Matt on the list. So thank you for your testimony, everyone that has testified before the council this evening. That now will take us to advice and information and so reports from councillors on committee and board assignments. And I see Sal is in my top left-hand corner. So Sal, we, we'll start with you. Kelly will be next.
Thank you, Mayor. A brief report tonight, just a reminder to my colleagues that the Council of Governments Annual Meeting is from 6:00 to 7:00 PM on the 16th, so next, uh, Wed- Wednesday on Zoom. And, uh, Mayor, you and I have a date with the Oregon Transportation Commission, uh, from 12:30 to 2:30 on the 17th. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Kelly.
As I listen to the comments tonight, it crossed my mind, uh, how important a certain meeting, a council meeting coming up March 20th, I, I believe is the correct date, that we are going to be presenting the construction excise tax information for the council consideration. And I just want to briefly say that there are elements within this that would probably help it because we're looking at land banking and things like that where we might be able to take some of this land or take money and use it for purchase of land so we could perhaps have some places to put Turtle Doves and things like that. I want you to keep that in mind. Beyond that, I just wanted to briefly address a couple of, uh, other things with YCAP. This is the January year-end report, uh, or January month-end report. Let's see, office furniture has been ordered. Some donated from Providence to and have case managers are providing services to, uh, this is turnkey participants in the program. As of December 31, 2021, the COVID vulnerability status has been removed. Currently, 40 rooms are occupied with 83 individuals. There is consistent waitlist for this program, which is probably going to be that way from, from now on. Six participants in the turnkey program successfully completed the RentWell program and are continuing to work with their case managers in obtaining vouchers. With the Navigation Center, uh, we're continuing in the planning stage. It's been renamed Any Door Place, which I believe Alexandria told you last meeting. The purpose of Any Door Place is to combine two neighboring YCAP shelters into a facility that will continue to include overnight shelter and a day center and space for onsite managers and service partners. This is a physical expansion of the existing YCAP work and will fill known gaps in the homeless services in Yamhill County. The projected program start date is June 30th, 2022 and anticipated phasing in, in new service elements. So this will be done in conjunction with the turnkey project. And I just kind of wanted to speak really briefly, I know I don't have much time, about the shelter itself. There's two buildings. They're right across from each other. The buildings are like a daylight, I mean, they just slope down there. So one of them's an older, uh, craftsman-style house and another one's probably a ranch-style home that's been added on to several times. So there's some real logistics in putting these two shelters together and creating an in-between space. They're not only going to have to deal with the slope down the hill from the front of the buildings, but also the slope between the two buildings. It'll be an interesting construction project. But it will connect the two homes, connect several places within, uh, the two homes so that they can use this shelter for meeting rooms and places for people to go and wash up and, uh, have an opportunity to bathe and things like that. It's going to be a real plus for the community. So that's my report.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's move over to Zach and then after Zach, Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, only thing I've got is, uh, DEI Committee is meeting Thursday evening for their monthly meeting. And then in the meantime, the next two days, we'll be conducting interviews of nine applicants, I think, to fill two open seats, one of which is the Youth Liaison. So that'll be coming back to you, uh, to us all, um, after that. And that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Chris.
Yes, the Historic Landmark Committee met. Um, we, uh, they've, well, not, I shouldn't say we, I'm the liaison. I'm not part of the committee. They voted to, uh, for their chair to be John Mead this year or, and Mary Beth Branch, the, the vice. And, um, I just, uh, we had an extensive discussion regarding, uh, looking at updating the demolition code, um, as well as update on the public engagement and outreach program that they're trying to put together. And I just, I, I won't get on all the details of that. You can ask me after the meeting if you're interested. But I want to put a shout out to our Planning Department who, uh, is doing a ton of work while being understaffed. So, uh, thank you for what they're doing to try to put all this together for these committees. It was a, it was a mammoth lift they brought to us for that meeting. Thank you.
Hear, hear, Chris. Uh, Planning, uh, group is doing a phenomenal job, but thank you. Let's then move over to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, i- if, if it's okay, um, I'll give my report. I would also like to expand just a little bit on Kelly's report in regards to Turnkey and Navigation Center and only so because it's already come up in some email exchanges with some citizens that wanted, um, and more of an understanding of it. And, um, I had emailed back saying that I would or if, if Kelly didn't, I would. And she touched on things, but I think given the public comment tonight that maybe adding a little context for those two programs would be okay. So I'll stop my introduction, give my report, and then stop me when you have to. I wanted to also add on to, uh, the construction excise tax in, in the McMinnville Affordable Housing Committee. So following our last council meeting, we took a really clear message back that included, um, the concerns that had come up regarding transparency and inclusion of the construction com- um, community as we were putting together a recommendation for council. So, um, we discharged a work group that met the following Monday, so right away, to put together a plan specifically of how we were going to do that outreach, um, to, um, the, uh, Home Builders Association and other, um, and other builders alike. And so that's in process, but I wanted, um, I wanted my co-councillors to know that, that we heard that feedback and, um, and, uh, and are definitely trying to, um, make sure that we've got lots of commentary when we bring you a recommendation, that it's been reviewed and, um, advised by a very diverse, um, a, a group of interests. Um, uh, our Visit McMinnville Board meeting, um, was delayed, so I don't have any report on that, although we do have a day-long strategic planning meeting at the end of the month. I believe it's February 25th. So, Mr. Mayor, may I take one or two more minutes on Turnkey and NavCenter?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So I just wanted to give a little background about how these programs, um, came to be and a little more on what they've done. All, um, I won't cite specific data because I don't necessarily remember the exact numbers, but I will give you, um, approximates and with the data is available. So on the Turnkey Project, um, actually, if you came to the six o'clock meeting, you would have heard some discussion, discussion about a budget line item about how our community partners and our city came together to provide emergency shelter in response to the COVID-19 pandemic during the lockdown. I would say in terms of addressing homelessness as a city, it's, it's, uh, COVID actually created an opportunity for us to, um, do something that we really hadn't done before. Uh, YCAP had done a little, uh, a project pilot of motelling. And our cities and county came together to fund that motelling project. And then that motelling project has been so successful, um, with a 75% success rate of people that go, that went into the motelling project achieving permanent housing on the far side of it. So the next step of that was to identify funding in, um, the Oregon State Legislature and work with our state representatives and, um, continue work with community partners to lobby for funds in order to do this project. And so that was, uh, that effort was successful, um, this year, although, uh, we had tried and failed in the past, um, for those, uh, same, um, funds. Ooh. Back and forth from, I switched over to talking about the Navigation Center from Turnkey. When I mentioned the legislature, I'm sorry, I switched back and forth. Um, uh, so if we can very quickly just go back to that there was great community partnership on this motelling program and then there was continued partnership, including intergovernmental agreements with, um, the city, Providence, uh, YCAP, Oregon Housing and Community Services. And that's what's translating into, um, the Navigation Center, which does have a deadline of, of, oh, man, sorry. They're two great projects. They're very different, but they run some similarities, especially in the partnerships, because YCAP has been an invaluable partner. So the project turned into Turnkey, um, through this greater, uh, community partnership. And then you heard tonight, Kelly, tell you that currently, um, there are 40 rooms occupied with 83 individuals. And so that's become a permanent part of, um, uh, of one of the many solutions that are needed. And then on the Navigation Center, um, that, I'll take less time. But similarly, there has been a lot of partnership towards bringing those funds to McMinnville. We've had a lot of support with, uh, various members of the Oregon State Legislature, but, um, especially Ron Noble and, um, then this incredible partnership with, um, YCAP, but also other community partners, because it wasn't clear early on who and how these monies could be housed. And that, as Kelly said, is set to open June 30th, and we hope to see a lot of great success there. And so I, uh, I know that's not enough. And obviously, the problem's not solved. There are still people suffering from houselessness. There are still people in neighborhoods that are, um, uh, you know, being very disturbed by things that are happening in their neighborhood. So I know it's not enough, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to highlight that these two very effective programs are programs that come out of the city of McMinnville. And I hope that we can continue to bring programming that addresses a variety of concerns. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Adam? Oh, go ahead. Uh, Zach?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to take a second after that to, to thank Council President Drapkin as well as, uh, councillor Minkew for, for taking a few extra minutes to highlight the good programs that we're working on and propping up that, that, that do good and, and pull at some of those themes that we heard from public comment while tonight's agenda item on the ordinance later is, is merely the narrow focus of enforcement. And that's what we're laser-focused on and getting that right. And frankly, since December 14th, we've been working on it to, to ensure that it isn't as rigid and structured and horrible as it could be if we didn't take time to make sure, not horrible, sorry. Take, take, take time to make sure it was crafted elegantly and, and did, did good while also being just the enforcement tool. So, uh, thanks for taking extra time tonight out of those to, to highlight those good programs that we're offering.
Thank you, because there are a lot of good work along with affordable housing coming up with long-term solutions. It's a lot of work because we don't have, i.e., the money in, in, within the city to do some of these things. Thank you. Let's go over to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd echo Zach's comment of thanking, uh, Remy and Kelly for expanding on that. on that. I hope some of the constituents that have sent me emails tune in tonight and got to hear that expanded work that you guys are doing and our partners are doing on the Navigation Center and Operation Turnkey. As far as council reports, we had a YCOM meeting today, just basically went over some minutes that we had from past meetings, got a short report from Patty. And only thing really to mention is we got our first payment of cell phone 911 fee revenue. If you remember, that changed with the last legislative cycle and went up to a dollar. And so been seven months now in the fiscal year, and we got our first quarter payment, kind of like the, when the cannabis revenues first started coming in, we don't really know exactly what to expect, but this first payment was about half of what our annual amount was the previous year. So typically, we get about a little under $500,000. And I think our first quarter revenues were about $250,000, this, this first quarter payment we just got. So that looks up for YCOM and should stabilize any rate increases, we'll probably see this budget cycle. So still early in that, but that's my perspective on that. We got our final report for Fire District being back, and so I got that today from Chief and going to digest that here later this week. And we'll get to work on some polling questions. Should have those done by the end of the month, hopefully, and get out to polling on that and see what the temperature is for not only our constituents, but also what Mac Rule is feeling on the military and the Fire District moving forward. And then Airport Commission, our RFP for our new airport administrator that we have out right now closes on Friday at 2:00. So probably in the next, by the end of the month, be doing some interviews on that and then possibly have that before council for award and adoption the end of March from the timeline that I'm seeing on that. So that's where I'm at for my committee assignments. And thank you, everybody else, for all the good work you're doing on reporting on your committee assignments. I enjoy listening to this report and I think we divvy up the workload fairly well. So thanks for all your work.
Thank you, Adam. Chris, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Adam, would it be out of bounds to ask for a, to see, or should I be asking perhaps maybe the chief to get a copy of that final report?
I don't see why not.
I'd love to get a copy of that. If you could email that off to me, I'd appreciate it.
We can take care of getting that out to the full counselor.
Okay.
Full counsel, Counselor Kenowitz. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of items from my perspective. Last Wednesday on the 2nd, we had MURAC, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee meeting. We elected new officers. Walt Gao will remain chair and Kelly McDonald vice-chair. We had two reports from two businesses that are in the process of construction on Alpine Avenue, Pebbles Dentistry, and then the boutique cottages that are going in. And both of them have had to develop Ninth Street with curbs and gutters, which were out of, out of their, out of their initial cost of, of putting things together. And then the boutique cottages had to also put one of the Alpine lights in, and so they came back to ask us for some additional dollars to accomplish the thing, since they were doing so much of the curb and gutter work there. We authorized a parking study on Third Street Improvement Projects. And then we had an opportunity to look at the year-end financial report for MURAC as of June 30th, 2021. And then we had an opportunity to look at the proposed budget for 2022, 2023. And we addressed our strategic plan, which is a five-year plan, and kind of got a sense of where we're going from that perspective. Then on Thursday, I had an opportunity to be a part of MWAC, which is the Mid Willamette Valley Advisory Committee on Transportation and a number of topics there. But the big topic was Cooper Brown, who is the financial director for ODOT, talked to us about the IIJA flexible fund scenarios. And you may or may not be aware, but through that jobs, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, ODOT is in line to get about $1.2 billion for transportation projects. And we talked a little bit of how we'd like to see those dollars, because there's many ways to split that up among the ODOT fees and whether it's fix-it or whether it's enhanced or whether it's climate, there's just all kinds of things there. So we had a long discussion around that. We had a presentation on Connect Oregon, talking about some funds that were available, and there were two projects. One was rehabilitating railroad ties in Independence, Oregon, and the other was a line that's going from Portland through Albany with the Willamette Valley Rail Trestle Replacement Project. We talked about the STIP, which is the statewide transportation improvement plan. They're going to change that a bit. And so that's what we had happening there. I would just, in conclusion, like to remind counselors that next Tuesday, a week from today, the 15th, at 5:00, we're going to have our State of the City and also recognizing partners and recognizing pillar and legacy award winners for this year. So I would send that invitation out to all of you. We'll be getting something in an email form to you. Also, we've been in the newspaper. Now, I have one other piece of business for the council before we go to department heads. We had a motion to adopt a city group agreement as discussed in our January 25th work session. And so at the 25th meeting, our council president, Remy Drabkin, led us through a council, a group agreement discussion and consensus was that we formally adopt this on an annual basis by having each counselor sign the agreement. Before you, you know, part of your packet, before you are those, on the, is the council agreement, and we have authorized the city recorder to collect signatures once formally adopted. So what I'm going to be doing is asking for a motion to formally adopt the council group agreement, and we sign that on an annual basis. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move the adoption of the resolution, Mayor.
I'll give a second on that.
Okay. All in favor, please indicate by saying?
Is there a discussion, Mayor?
Yeah, any discussion, any further discussion before we move? Seeing none, then I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This, this passes unanimously six to zero. Thank you for that. Let's now go through and have a department head review. We've got a lot of people on the line, 51 at this point. So I'm just going to do my very best. Amanda, I have you first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Let's go to Chief Lifford.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, a couple of things to report on. One of them, our, our department and its team are continuing to, to support St. Paul and their efforts in the fatality of firefighter Smith. We've had several honor watches where members of our department have assisted other departments in standing by the casket at the funeral center and will continue to do so. We have a medic running calls for them Thursday evening. We have an engine, a brush rig, and a couple of chief officer's vehicles setting up for the celebration, or not the celebration, but the ceremonies on Saturday. So we continue to be available for them as we can. We also have, one of our peer support group is working with their peer support group and the state peer supporters in, through the processes, as their, as their team works through this horrific tragedy. The Fire Department here at McMinnville has returned to a normal work schedule. We are back on the cycle of three again. We're out of the emergency staffing. We have four of the five vacancies that we had filled from the, when we had vacancies. The fifth one will be filled in two weeks. She just gave her a notice, so she'll be on board. And all the vacancies that we had from turnover are, are filled, will be filled in two weeks, the fifth one will be filled. We have one person from the new six going through the processes. We have interviews next Tuesday for seven additional candidates to see, fill those five remaining vacancies. So we're moving those processes forward as we speak. Additionally, I submitted a letter of support to the county emergency manager for support for a grant application for countywide and city McMinnville Emergency Operations Plan update. Our last emergency operation plan was updated in 2015. It was done through a grant application process cooperatively with the county and, and the municipalities. We are working through that process also and have submitted a letter of support for that process. Hopefully, we'll get some feedback from the emergency manager's office in the next month or so, and that's how that grant cycle went. The other, one other thing I wanted to touch on was the council was briefed at one point that with the additional new hires authorized, that we would probably be bringing a budget amendment to council for the additional costs for that project. We will not have to be bringing a budget amendment to, to the council for that because we had already budgeted additional costs for safer grants, which we were not awarded. So the money in, money out comes from different places, but it is still a wash in the long run, so we won't have to worry about bringing a budget amendment forward for that. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chief. Lot of good, lot of good information there. Let's go to Heather.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Kenowitz, for the shout out. So the planning department's been carrying 40% to 60% staff vacancy for the last eight months. And I'm happy to say we're down to our two last positions, getting them filled. We made an offer to a candidate two weeks ago, and they accepted it, so they'll be joining us in a couple of weeks. And we're doing interviews for our last position here in just a few weeks. So thank you for everyone's patience as we work through our staffing issues, and we're doing our best to keep all the committees and development group propped up and responding in timely manners. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather, for your heavy lift, because I know you're putting in additional hours just to keep the business going on the best you can. So thank you. Let's go to Scott Burke. Do you have anything this evening?
Thanks, Mayor. Nothing for the council tonight.
Okay. Let's go over to Ann.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nothing new to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Let's go to Kylie.
Same here, nothing to report. Thank you.
Uh huh. Jen?
Maybe you're referring to me or Jennifer, but I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. And let's, okay, I'm trying to negotiate all of this stuff.
Well, I can jump, I can jump in. This is Jennifer Quay, our finance director. And I'm breaking the streak. I do have something to report. So as many of you know, I'm just, I am so thrilled to be able to report that Governor Brown appointed Judge Cynthia Kaufman Noble, our municipal court judge, to the Yamhill County Circuit Court. Oh, my gosh, guys. This is huge. It's, I mean, I'm, I'm so thrilled as a, as a new member of the Yamhill County community to have Judge Kaufman Noble on that bench. It's, I get emotional thinking about it. I'm so excited. So, but it does, you know, have consequences for us, the folks who are being left behind. So we will be working furiously to hopefully bring before you in your next meeting movement on adopting or putting forward names for Judge Pro Tem to help us during the transition, because it's our goal not to have to cancel any municipal court dates during this transition. And then we will also be bringing a plan for how, how we want to, in a very transparent and, I don't know, in a manner that befits the importance of the role of the municipal court judge, a process for selecting a new judge. So that'll all be coming, and we appreciate your patience as we bring these things forward. We'll be moving fast and hopefully dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's along the way. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, and that is great news. Let's go over to Susan, and then we'll go to Chief Scales.
Nothing from Perks and Rec tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Matt?
Yeah, real quick, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We've talked about hiring over the last couple of months. Some good news to report. We've got a couple lateral officers that'll be starting the first part of March. One's from North Dakota, one's from Madras, so that's good. We've got a couple conditional jobbers out to anticipation of one of the vacancies that we've gotten, and we're anticipating a couple more vacancies in the next couple of months. So, and then lastly, as we talk about parking, abandoned vehicles, that sort of thing, I'll be meeting with two finalists tomorrow to hopefully solidify a primary candidate who will go into backgrounds for that position. So making some progress slowly but surely. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. And again, thank you for the, the reporting that you're doing on a weekly basis that keeps the council abreast of what's, what's happening out there. So thank you. Let's go to Jeff.
Hey, Kim, here, members of the council. Just one quick piece of logistics. Council President Drabkin had some internet issues. She's rejoined us on the phone. She kind of dropped off this first page, so even though she's not on the screen, I think she'll probably pop up the next time she talks, but she is with us still. Wanted to let the council know that I have an ICMA executive board meeting this week. We made the decision last month to not travel, so it's a virtual meeting. So I'll be in a board meeting Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., just to let you know that I'll be a little bit unavailable for those several hours this week. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's go ahead and go to our consent agenda. This evening, we have two resolutions on the consent agenda. Is there any counselor that would request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard in a regular place on the agenda? Hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Some move?
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sure there were others. Any, any opposed, please signify by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously six to zero. You know, if we mute everyone, then we, we never have opposition, right? Okay. Let's go ahead and move to our ordinances. Ordinances this evening, we're going to consider the reading and a possible second reading of ordinance number 5109. We are now considering the matter of ordinance 5109. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? I think Chris is just playing with me. So we'll go ahead and ask Amanda to read the ordinance by title only. Title, ordinance number 5109. Go ahead, Amanda.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5109, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville, amending chapters 8.36, 10.04, 10.28, 10.36, and 10.44 of the McMinnville municipal code relating to camping, abandoned vehicles, and bicycles and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Let's have coun- Let's have council discussion.
Mayor, I actually have a presentation to start us off with, if you're okay with that.
I'm surely, I am, because I know you've put a lot of good work into it, and we've asked you to do that, so go ahead.
Okay, so I'm about to share my screen for our PowerPoint, but I also want to note that Chief Matt Scales and Captain Tim Simons, and I did see Captain Jasco on here earlier, they're all here as well to answer any questions and provide any feedback that the council may have as we go through this discussion tonight. So let me share my screen here. Okay, so again, we're back talking about updates regarding the towing of abandoned vehicles. As the council may recall, we've been before the council on a few occasions, first in December in a work session, and then in two meetings in January to discuss some further revisions, and we're here tonight to walk through those revisions for a council's consideration. So the roadmap for discussion tonight is we're going to start with the key considerations that staff have utilized in these, in these revisions, as well as from the council input that we've received over these last three discussion, these days of discussion, and then we'll just do a final overview of all the proposed revisions, because there's been many iterations over the, those three meetings. So I want to start by, out by addressing what these amendments do and also do not do. So the purpose of these changes are, are really to do three things. The first is to, and the most important, is to address some confusion about what are considered abandoned vehicles. The second is to separate out abandoned vehicles and how that enforcement is handled by the city versus inhabited vehicles, and how though, how inhabited vehicles may be enforced by the city. And then third is to, to address revisions to ORS 203079, which was amended in 2001, or 2021, excuse me, by, by the legislature. So with that, there's, there's five considerations that we've highlighted. The first, like I said, is to clarify what's considered an abandoned vehicle. We'll walk through that definition again, or the proposed revisions to that definition. Second was to codify current outreach efforts, and that was after the council discussion about what the police department currently does to try and contact owners of abandoned vehicles before a notice to tow is ever placed on the vehicle, so just putting that in the code, what they currently do. The third, like I said, is to clarify the appropriate enforcement regulations. That is, what are the regulations for abandoned vehicles, and what are the regulations for inhabited vehicles? And essentially, to make it so if it's an abandoned vehicle, it's one type of enforcement, and if it's a camping, if it's an inhabited vehicle, it may be subject to another type of enforcement, but there's no longer going to be an overlap where abandoned, the abandoned vehicle code would be used for inhabited vehicles. The fourth, like I said, is to comply with the revised Oregon statutes. And then the last one is to consider the realities of new equipment used for camping. It was abundantly clear when we were going through these abandoned vehicle regulations that when, that we needed to be cognizant of the fact that, that the turtle dove pods do exist, and that our code really doesn't address what, how they should be regulated, and so we wanted to make sure that we were being clear again that it wouldn't fall under the abandoned vehicle code, it would fall under camping, so they wouldn't be subject to the towing that you find in our abandoned vehicle code. So to reiterate, the focus and purpose is to address abandoned vehicles, and to the extent at the proposed revisions and new state statutes required other revisions to our code, those were done as well as part of this project. So with that, I'm going to walk through all of the revisions. We're going to start out talking about the changes to Title 10 regarding abandoned vehicles, and then we're going to talk about the changes to Title 10 regarding bicycles, and that's specifically with regard to this, to this issue we had where we didn't really actually have a place where turtle doves could legally go at night on city, city property, so we wanted to address that, to make sure that they had a place they could go legally. And then finally, the changes to chapter 8.36 to comply with state statutes. Now, all these provisions are in the council packet, but I think it's just, you know, good practice to go, go through them, both for the council and for the community. So starting with the definition of abandoned vehicle, and as the council may recall, the reason that this became a focus was because there was some confusion about what is considered an abandoned vehicle. And really, the, the key confusion actually occurred between items, what are now items one and two, in what the condition for an abandoned vehicle could be, where items one and two were all one under, are all one under our current code, and so there was confusion about whether or not a vehicle is considered abandoned only if both, it's not registered or doesn't have current registration, and also doesn't have insurance, or if the way it's seems to imply is that it could be either or. So we separated those out. As part of our discussion with council, we deleted the condition of the vehicle appears to be abandoned by its owner, because that was vague and frankly was not a factor that the police were using anyway, so we felt that it was appropriate to remove that. And then finally, as we discussed, this distinction between regulating and enforcement of abandoned vehicles versus vehicles that may be inhabited, we added to the definition this language where a vehicle the city believes to be inhabited is not considered an abandoned vehicle, so that way it pulls any regulations out of inhabited vehicles out from the abandoned vehicle code. And this is really important, because this is in regard to the state statutes, where there is this implicit potential conflict between the state statutes, because abandoned vehicles under state statutes can be towed within twenty-four hour, or after twenty-four hours of notice, and can ultimately be dismantled as part of that tow after a period of time holding it, versus the camping statutes require seventy-two hour notice, you have to hold the vehicle for a period of time, there's regulations about where it has to be held. So it's also to make sure that we are compliant and protecting people's property by making sure that we're going, we're erring on the side of, of the statute that is more favorable to people retaining ownership of their, of their property. So then the second thing that we did is we realized, again, as we were going through this discussion with council, counselors adequately pointed out that there's this issue of the turtle dove pods are towed by bicycles, and in our code, we defer, we define a vehicle as including bicycles, so technically with that definition of vehicle, a bicycle with a turtle dove pod could have been towed under the abandoned vehicle code. And again, we're trying to create this distinction of something that's inhabited versus something that's not inhabited. So what we did is we modified the definition of vehicle to not apply, to include bicycles, except when we're talking about abandoned vehicles. So again, we're pulling out inhabited, inhabited vehicles or that could fall under this definition. We're pulling any, all of that out from the abandoned vehicle regulations. So then going to the chapter 10.28 revisions, this is where the prohibition is, is provided. So we updated item E to say, to say that basically a vehicle that meets the definition of abandoned vehicle after it's been noticed for tow can, can be towed at the owner's expense. And when we were going through that revision, one of the things that the council had brought up was, you know, in essence, basically what can happen is as soon as a vehicle is deemed abandoned, it can get this notice, and then it can be towed twenty-four hours later, and that, that seems like a pretty aggressive timeframe, and it's, and under our current code, there's no requirement that the city does any other type of contact except that notice for tow. But in reality, that's not what our police department does. Our police department does make efforts to contact the owner or possessor of the vehicle prior to even noticing for tow, and so what we ended up doing is putting in codifying, or suggesting to codify what the police department currently does, and that's in this new provision 10.28.085, where basically the police department has to document that it is attempting to make, that it has attempted to make contact with, with the owner through information, an informational flyer prior to towing, and if for any reason, if there's an emergency circumstance why the flyer can't be provided, it needs to be tagged for tow immediately, the city has to document that emergency reason as well. So again, it's just reiterating that this effort is being made, and if it's not being, if it can't be made, we need to document why. Finally, the, this chapter 10.44 revision, so right now, we don't have a process outlined for appealing a tow, even though the state statute requires a process for appealing the tow. So we've codified the hearing process, it's similar to other code enforcement violations, and how the, the appeal process is handled for those. So basically, we're just codifying what's already in the code in another, in section 2.50, and we're just applying it also to our abandoned vehicle process. So then on the chapter 10.36 revisions, as the council may recall from our January 25th meeting when we were discussing this, the issue again was discussing where, where are turtle dove pods allowed to go? We do need to be able to specify where turtle dove pods can go in order to be compliant with the Boise decision. And as of right now, under our current code, technically, if the bicycles and turtle dove pods are parked on the street, they are in violation of our code and could be confiscated. So with that, staff had an internal discussion, and the reality is, is that right now where turtle dove pods are going is on the street, and while not the ideal solution, we do think it's an interim step to make sure that there, we're decriminalizing the parking on the street that's already occurring. And the police department has had conversations with the turtle dove pod manufacturer about reflective, you know, some reflective lighting measures that can be taken so the pods are more visible at night to prevent any, you know, to prevent any conflicts with traveling motor vehicles. So basically, the change that we're proposing, that staff is recommending, is to say that a person can park a bicycle on a street if they parallel, if they park it parallel to the curb, in accordance with the state statute that basically says you need to park within, I believe it's twelve inches of the curb, parallel. So that's the state motor vehicle code statute that applies to all vehicles that park on the right of way next, next to a curb. And then the second sentence, those, those changes are just to separate out the parking on the street that used to not be allowed at all, which now we're saying is allowed under certain circumstances, from being, from parking on the sidewalk, so the second sentence is only about parking on the sidewalk and when, when that's allowed for a bicycle. So those are the, the changes. It's just to clarify, first sentence is about street, second sentence is about sidewalk for parking a bicycle. Then the chapter 8.36 revisions, there's two made, there's two revisions to, to 8.36. The first is on the definition of established. We're creating a definition because the state statute doesn't define what an established campsite is, and neither does our code, and given that we're now separating out, we're separating out inhabited vehicles from our abandoned vehicle code, staff recommend that we put some parameters about where, how far vehicles need to move to not be considered the same campsite. So we're, again, we're trying to address the fact that this is a different situation than, you know, the traditional tent, tent camping, where it's more easily to, easy to discern where they're located and where they're moving to. So we created this definition of established, council had a discussion at the last council meeting about the distance, and proposed, and some counselors proposed a thousand feet. We put in the staff report maps that show what a thousand foot radius, radius looks like from Mc, both Mc, Wartman Park and at Marsh Lane, at Mackwater and Light, so just for some perspective of what that looks like. The second definition, the second change is, is basically to make 8.36 compliant with the revisions to the state statute. So basically, what those revisions stated is we now have to hold, hold anything we collect for seven, or we have to hold anything that we collect within a certain area of the jurisdiction, and it has to be released within thirty days, but in, if it's claimed. But in reality, our city prosecutor generally releases things much earlier if they're held in evidence, so we also wanted to make sure that we allowed for an earlier release, since that seems, that's the more typical, that's the more typical circumstance that we see with our, with chapter 8.36. So with that, that's all the revisions as currently proposed in the packet, so I'm going to stop sharing now and open it up now for council discussion or questions of staff.
Thank you, Amanda, for that, that great PowerPoint that brought clarity to the good work that you and the police department have done. So discussion among council or questions for Amanda or Matt? Go ahead, Kelly.
When will we have a procedure as far as, you said we don't have one right now, and you put this other piece in there, but when will we have this procedure? How long will it take?
So the procedure already exists in the code. This is just referring to that procedure, so as soon as you pass it, the procedure will be there.
Okay. Didn't, wanted to be sure. All right. Thanks.
Council President Grabkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple thoughts and suggestions as we move through this. I'm gonna go from easy, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't know what's easy or not. In 10.28.080 line D, just as a, trying to update our practices, I was wondering if we could take the gender specificity out of that, out of that language and just change it to their designee. More into the meat of what we're talking about here, I have a suggestion moving forward, and I don't think I'm taking staff by surprise with this. I've talked with a couple members of staff, but my suggestion is going to be that in, in what moves forward, that we include a recommendation, or, I'm sorry, not a recommendation, that we include specific language that directs staff to address a, a long-term solution specifically on, I'm specifically talking about the turtle doves, and the reason I'm calling them out as a, a specific part of this, other than it's in line with our conversation, is because as we see, they are working, and so I think, you know, supporting programs that work, even, even at providing just shelter, which is what's happening here, I, I think that we should be supportive of those programs. So in the staff background, in talking about 10.36, the, it, it says in this background, while a long-term solution requires additional strategic planning and identified resources, and I'm taking that, that's the, the, the entry line to, it's likely that the turtle dove pods will continue to park on the street. What I would like to do is include that language and say that we give staff direction to include additional strategic planning and to identify resources. And then I would like to take that further and say that, you know, in McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, we really have those resources. We, A, have a program that we've studied in the past that has a lot of similarities, although it doesn't translate directly across, so we have a lot of research, and we've invested a lot of time into knowing how to make programs like this work. We have our community partners that would be necessary to do that, and, you know, I think it's the, and we seem to have some council support generally, and I'm, I'm kind of going back to what I suggested at our last meeting, which is that we identify some limited city-owned that's not on the public right-of-way, which is dangerous, and two turtle doves have been hit, so if I'm not mistaken, I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to share any incorrect information, but I do believe two turtle doves have been hit on the street, so it's far safer than what's happening there. It is the community shared goal, regardless of, of what you, you believe is the right way of achieving it, our community shared goal is to not have unhoused individuals sleeping on the streets. So I feel like we're meeting a shared goal. I feel like we have the resources. I feel like we especially in McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission have the resources and intelligence to put together a program that addresses concerns that came up when we originally looked at doing a managed program for safe overnight parking, and just briefly on that. And just briefly on that, that, that language that was allowed through in safe overnight parking, that still exists in our code. Um, Howie Harkema, who testified earlier, um, he still helps people find places that the community, um, has no idea about that's legally allowed in the code, where, where people are able to park overnight, um, without having, uh, negative impacts on their health or negative impacts on those, uh, neighborhoods where they are able to reside. We can scale back, uh, that type of program, make it applicable. We can hear the feedback. We can understand that, um, people don't want, um, our unhoused community living near our parks. We can hear that and incorporate that into a plan. We can also, again, going back to ideas of transparency, be more than happy as we put together these work groups to make sure that, um, co-counselors, et cetera, are, oh, very aware of our meeting dates and that we're always scheduling in a comment time at the end so that we can be working on, um, producing a solution that's very informed. I am confident, um, and I recognize I might be speaking out of turn in a way, but I am confident that within, um, McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, we can bring you back a proposal, um, being exceptionally respectful of staff time and staff resources and the very, um, uh, the, knowing our planning department is stretched thin, but we have a lot of resource within that committee and individuals who know, um, how to put these pieces together. Um, a- a- and, and quite honestly, my, myself included, if this committee assignment has, um, not, taught me how to bring our community partners together on, um, solution-oriented programming, then I don't know what I've been doing in there for eight years or five years. Um, so, that is the, what I would suggest we change is that we include that specific direction, um, and that that can then be handed off. Um, in terms of the 1,000 feet, and then I'll relinquish my time here, and thank you for listening, um, in terms of the 1,000 feet, um, I, I could not agree more that it is the definition of, of chasing a problem. And I think that, uh, what we've shown, and we've shown, especially with the Motelling Project and turning that into Project Turnkey, is that, uh, providing small amounts of, um, stability, um, can really be life-changing. And I understand that that stability can't happen in front of your house all the time, especially if there's garbage. And it can't happen in front of my house all the time. I understand that there are these other complex overviews. Um, and I understand that our police need, um, because currently, we, it is our police that will be following up on these things. I understand that our police need to be able to respond to neighborhood complaints when, uh, the city streets or city parks are being disrespected, and, um, whether that's by choice or by circumstance. Uh, I am, I, I think that this 1,000 feet, um, is cruel. And I also think that, I, I don't see a lot of options out of having an enforcement tool, but it will be very important to me that if we are moving forward with these enforcement tools that you give me and this committee this support, being very respectful of staff time, um, and give us an opportunity to bring a prop- a, a proposal back, um, specific to turtle doves. And thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Council President. Sal, I saw your hand up, but, uh, it's down.
Yeah, I, I did have a question for the Council President. I guess I'm a little concerned that you're conflating, um, you know, two related issues here. And I just wonder, like, I don't think that anything the council has done would prevent you from bringing something like what you're describing forward from the, your subcommittee. And, and so, I guess I'm confused why we need additional action from the council for you to bring forward something to deal with turtle doves out of that committee.
Um, thank you, Sal. I, um, well, would need to go back through what our work agenda is that was given to the city of McMinnville because what the work that we do is laid out in our short-term, medium-term, and long-term, um, plans. And I, I take your point. Um, I still feel it's important in terms of securing its place in the agenda. And while I feel confident we can do a lot of not being reliant on staff, that's not to say that we would not need some staff resources. And, um, so that, uh, you know, knowing that and knowing where we are, I feel like it's appropriate. We have our work plan approved by the city council. Um, and so, that's what brings me here. But, uh, but you're right, I could go through our work agenda with a, uh, our approved, uh, work plan with a fine-tooth comb and see if I could find it in there. But this also feels a little bit more upfront. I, it's a community conversation. It's happening now. It's happening in tandem with this conversation. And so, it feels like an appropriate time to be kind of asking for that consideration.
Okay, Kelly put her hand up, and then Zach. Kelly?
Remy, I, I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I think, for purposes of getting something done tonight, it might be better if we just go back, regroup, and discuss this within the Affordable Housing Commission and make a decision about what we're going to move forward with. I, I feel uncomfortable saying that we have within the group enough resources to make this work until we actually chat it out with them.
Okay, uh, let's go to Zach, and then let's go to Adam.
Thanks, um, I think if I could practice one of our tools, what I think I heard Council President say, it's not necessarily any amendments to the ordinance yet, but, um, in light of comments, um, and the distinguishment between what this ordinance is being, being merely tweaks to the enforcement tool, perhaps you, you would ask for, you know, counsel direction to, to prioritize propping up, um, programs and tools and assets immediately relative to this, you know, turtle doves as you, as you highlighted, and, and, and fast-track and bring some suggestions on good programming, um, tools back to us. Is that, is that what I'm hearing you ask?
Remy?
Yes, sir. Sorry, said it twice. Yes, sir. Redone.
Okay. Not to revise what we already have on the, on the plate tonight.
The only revision I offered to what's actually written is to degender the language in 10-point, um, I, whatever it said earlier. That's the only actual revision to the ordinance. I am asking that the council give that clear direction in tandem, uh, since these conversations are happening side by side.
Uh, well, so in light of that, then I think that's fantastic direction. And maybe after we close the book on, on this ordinance, um, maybe if you, Mayor, could pause for, maybe, Remy, you want to throw a motion out, and we could, we could all come to some direction and provide staff that direction to, to do that.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to, uh, Adam.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, wanted clarification for the two turtle doves that were hit. They were actually parked perpendicular in their parking spots, and so, they were, um, not parked in the safest fashion, which isn't negating the fact that even them parked on the road is dangerous. But, um, I think us trying to, as staff, that trying to identify different strips for them to park on, uh, without actually putting up a, a turtle dove village, or if that's what you're asking for, Remy, I, I do feel the, them parking on the street is the easiest for enforcement and the easiest for them to, um, understand from a policy standpoint without putting them in, in undue harm, uh, more than they already are. And I feel if we just kind of identified a few parking strips around town that it would be confusing and it'd be hard for, uh, them experiencing homelessness to understand as well as, uh, it would confuse from the enforcement side as well. The 1,000-foot rule, having experienced, uh, the behaviors over on Door and Drive a couple years ago, and, uh, seeing just the shuffle back and forth on McDaniel, um, I am standing firm on the recommendation of we keep that 1,000-foot rule in there. Uh, it, it does move them, uh, into different areas and make sure that we don't have, uh, camps actually setting up and, and things spilling out. And, you know, like we saw in Dustin Court and Marsh Lane, where people are actually building structures that, with pallet floors and, and things like that. So, I, I do feel that it's important that we keep that in there. Um, as far as what you're asking for and, and what Zach just alluded to, um, I'm personally happy to explore that, but I definitely think we need a, a partner that is willing and able and at the table, just like we experienced with the safe overnight camping. And we need somebody to manage that program, and that's not something that I feel is, uh, in the city's purview. And so, when you bring that program forward, um, I would like a partner identified, uh, that's ready to manage that and has the capacity to properly manage that. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, Sal, again, I saw your hand go up and down, so.
Yeah, I, I had, uh, similar questions to Adam, and I'm grateful for both Adam's question and for Council President, uh, Drapkin's thumbs up in response to the question. So, that was all I had.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, Chris, Councilor Chenoweth?
In, in general, I want to just kind of put the second behind or third behind, um, what Counselor Garvin has brought forth. Um, one question I do have from staff is I'm, I'm cognizant that our staff is being, um, has been stretched thin. Um, and, uh, before I got on board with, um, so to speak, reallocating staff resources to what is being proposed, I'd kind of like to know what is being, is going to not be done because they only have so much finite resources and time to work with. What's going to get tabled? Um, you know, there, there's been other stuff going on in the background that, that I don't want to see get lost in the middle of all this. So, I, not that this isn't a priority, but I just really want to be cognizant of where our staff is at. And I understand, Council President, you did a very good job of saying you'll be cognizant, but what does that translate to?
Thank you, Chris.
I'll take a first stab, and I see Heather, uh, turned on her camera, so I think she can answer. Because I, I see it as two components. There's going to be the setup component that is running through the committee, which would be Heather's purview. And then, there's going to be, if a program is propped up, what does the then resulting enforcement and operations of that all look like? So, there's two different components of it. So, maybe Heather can touch, touch on the first, and then maybe Chief Scales could touch on the second.
And, and to put context, part of my question here is, you know, as, as a new counselor, which I consider myself still to be, I don't even understand how we get anything on the agenda. And here, we're talking about what items are going to be pushed aside so this can go forward, and I don't even know what those are. So, I just want clarity as to what we're actually discussing here. Um, so, go ahead and continue, but I just want to kind of express the background of why I'm asking this question.
So, he- uh, Heather first, and then, uh, Chief?
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll discuss the committee work, um, Counselor Chenoweth. So, m- much like Counselor Minkie, um, suggested, all of the planning department committees work from work plans that we have, um, annually, and we put them together. What we would do with this is, uh, go back to the Affordable Housing Committee and discuss that, that this has been a direction from city council, um, and we would adjust the work plan to bring it in. So, that would mean it's not additive work, um, in terms of what we're, our current snapshot. Some things would be, get deferred down the road. And some of the, um, projects we're working on are, are big, long-term lift projects. Right now, we're working through Community Land Trust and things like that. So, there is, there is the opportunity to bring something in and insert it into that work plan.
Thank you, Heather. Chief?
Uh, if, uh, Counselor Chenoweth, just so I, I want to be clear, you're asking about day-to-day for the PD, correct?
I'm asking, yeah, what's going to, i- i- if we put this up as a priority, necessarily, that means something gets deferred. So.
Yes. So, so if you're talking about, uh, if you're talking about the, the addition of, uh, Council President Drapkin's, that, that's not going to have impact necessarily on our line staff's work. Uh, and if we're involved, uh, which I would assume we probably would be at, at one level or another, um, that would be a man, that would be a matter of administratively or captains or myself being involved in that.
Okay. And, and following back to Heather, I'm sorry, Heather, I know you turned off your camera, but, um, I, I understand you to say, and so, tell, correct me if I'm not understanding you correctly, which is entirely possible. Um, I understand you to say that you could add this without, uh, impacting any of the, so to speak, on-the-table, important issues that are being already addressed. You would, what you would defer is something that was long, a, a long-term goal, not something that was in the short term already being addressed to some of the things that, for instance, Amanda and you and I have spoken about that need to be addressed preferably before May. Um, none of that's going to get deferred as a result of this. Am I, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, you're, you're understanding me correctly. So, we dedicate a certain amount of each planner's time to staffing the committees that they lead. And so, this would be reflecting on that, that staff, that staffing time for that committee, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't impact other work plans that the planners are doing to support other programs. What, what impact is the work plan for the Affordable Housing Committee?
And Amanda, you're also seconding that. I saw your head kind of somewhat nod.
Yes, and that, but actually, your, 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 uh, note about the May thing triggered my thought too about, um, you know, any, anything where there is, um, additional work can have, um, additional impacts on, I'll call myself an ancillary player, right? So, so for other staff who may not be directly involved, so, um, that, that is a reality that does exist. And, um, but we're switching our priorities daily, right? So, if it's the council's direction, we're going to make that happen. Um, but yes, you're right, there are things that, I mean, the May thing, so, on my plan regardless, but, you know, like, for example, um, I'm working on some public contracting code work and a manual that are, um, that we have been told multiple times we need by regulators, and that might get pushed off for however period of time because I need to review something else, right? So, but.
And I can, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I, I've tied a bunch of time here getting into the weeds, trying to get an answer without being problematic here. Um, but I can, I can totally accept that. That would be a, a, a co- a long-term cost to, uh, make, uh, regulators outside of the area happy. That's a cost I'm willing to accept. What I don't want to see is stuff that we already have on the docket getting knocked aside for something that, that I'm kind of in the same camp as Counselor Garvin's in. So, that, that's what I'm trying to feel. At the same time, I hear Council President's heartbeat, so I don't want to be, and I'm with her on her heartbeat. So, I, I don't, I, I think I understand what I'm trying to say here. So, anyway, thank you very much for answering my questions. I got a clear idea of what, what I was after, and I appreciate it. And I really appreciate what all of my staff is doing, or our staff, city staff, is doing in these, uh, short-staffed times. Thank you, Chris. Uh, Remy, I saw your hand go up and then down.
Yes, I was so ready to answer, but staff has been answering wonderfully. So, I don't, uh, I don't think I need to. I, there is one thing I forgot to say in regards to this ordinance and kind of how we're, um, trying to approach things. And, you know, in our six o'clock meeting, and if you read through that, um, report, that whole report, is they recapped some of the work we did when, um, they were taught, when Marina and Company was talking about, um, uh, work of the MAC PAC, which I think has been highly regarded, um, uh, so far. Um, they were, uh, they were applauded for applying, uh, an equity lens to their work that they did. And we were told in that report that they continually asked themselves, "Who is positively and negatively affected by this decision or issue, particularly in regards to often marginalized or traumatized groups?" And, um, I know we're, uh, I know that we're putting this ordinance through tonight. I understand. that we're putting this ordinance through tonight. I understand that we need enforcement and, uh, um, I also know that if I take this equity lens that our city has been using and I apply it to this ordinance, um, I know what the outcome, I know what the answer of, of that is. And, um, uh, unfortunately, um, I think that we are, uh, that there, there is not enough positive outcome. Um, but I understand this is a step along the way and I just want to be able to continue on that path. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'll ask for any further discussions or, or, or questions.
And Mayor Hill, just so it's clear in case a motion does occur, the, the revision that, uh, Council President Drapkin was referring to is in 10.28.080D, changing, um, the pronoun to, to their designee. So just in case anybody makes a motion, that's what Council President Drapkin was referring to.
And that would be a minor amendment, correct?
Yeah, so if anyone wanted to make a motion with that, um, revision, they could just say as stated by the city attorney or reference that, uh, 10.28.080D.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, Sal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, um, move the, uh, motion forward on a first reading with the, uh, changes as amended, uh, based on the recommendations of the city attorney.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, so we, Sal has moved and Kelly has seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye for the first reading, moving to a second reading.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, our motion passes unanimously and so ordinance number 5109 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5109, an ordinance of the city of McMinnville amending chapters 8.36, 10.04, 10.28, 10.36, and 10.44 of the McMinnville municipal code relating to camping abandoned vehicles and bicycles and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Amanda. I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution 5109.
No moves.
Second.
It's been moved by Chris and seconded by Kelly. Um, I will ask the city recorder to poll the council. Claudia?
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Minky?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor President Drapkin?
Aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Uh, ordinance number 5109 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Uh, thank you for Amanda's work. Thank you for the police department and Heather's input. Thank the community for your input into this process. Uh, I think we've approached it very transparently with much discussion over a number of months and so, uh, we can move forward on that. Okay, um, we now, as the city council might recall, the ordinance had... Go, go ahead, um, Sal, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a point of order. We didn't actually act on, uh, Counselor Drapkin's request to, um, to send something back to her committee. And I don't know if we need a formal motion, but I did just want to express my personal support for that. Uh, and I don't know if we can just have thumbs up or whatever from members of the council to encourage her committee to amend its work plan or if we need a sec- a separate, um, kind of vote. But Chris has got his thumbs up, my thumbs up.
And Remy's was up.
So I, I would just encourage that, uh, conversation to go back to them and I wanted to acknowledge that as well.
I, I know Zach had said yes and Kelly said yes. And Adam, what's your thoughts? Yes. So we've got unanimous support to have Remy take that back to the Affordable Housing Committee and, uh, and devise a plan and bring it back to the council. Thank you. Uh, the city council may recall that Or- uh, ordinance 5110 did not have unanimous support at our January 25th, 2022 meeting and requiring the second reading to be conducted at a separate meeting. Unless any member requests otherwise, I will ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only. Does anybody have a concern with that? Hearing none, then, uh, I will have the city attorney read the second, uh, second reading of ordinance 5110 by title only. Go ahead, Amanda.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5110, an ordinance approving a zone change from OR, Office Residential, to C3, General Commercial, for a 0.2 acre parcel at 436 Southeast Baker Street.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll call on, uh, Planning Director, uh, Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, so good evening, Mayor and Councillors. This is your, um, second reading for an ordinance that would rezone a piece of property on Baker Street at 436 Southeast Baker Street from Office Residential to General Commercial. This is a recommendation coming to you from the Planning Commission. The decision document, which walks through the findings for how this, um, application meets the criteria in the zoning ordinance for a rezone, is, uh, Exhibit A to the ordinance itself. So that's what you would be approving and adopting. There's a three-part test in the zoning ordinance for considering property to be rezoned, um, in McMinnville. The three-part test is consistency with the comprehensive plan. Um, is the proposed amendment orderly and timely, considering the pattern, pattern of development in the area and surrounding land uses, and can utilities and services be efficiently provided to serve the property? Um, at your last meeting, you had considerable dialogue about it. I would encourage you that if we, um, if you need more information than what's currently in the record, that we should probably go to a public hearing to open that, uh, record up and bring that additional information to you because it also gives the applicant of the opportunity to respond to, to that information and it gives the public the opportunity to testify as well.
Okay. Any questions of Heather? Go ahead, Sal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to lower my hand. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, at the beginning of this portion of the conversation, I feel like I owe the applicant a bit of an apology. Uh, in the last meeting, I expressed frustration that, uh, at the lack of, of housing options that we have and the inability of our city to provide affordable housing for a lot of our citizens. And, uh, candidly, that is not this applicant's job to solve that problem for our city. Um, what I believe is that, uh, this applicant has a property that they have developed in a zone that has a commercial overlay, uh, and they're asking for a change from, uh, residential housing to be consistent with that commercial overlay. And I feel like as a city, uh, we have an obligation, a moral obligation to provide, uh, a consistent set of rules and a consistent framework for developers or anybody else who purchases property for a commercial, uh, function. And so I don't think I should let my personal opinion about the problems with housing and housing affordability, uh, stand in the way of somebody's, uh, right to use a property that they should actually lawfully be, I think, entitled to use. That, that zone, that area is zone commercial, uh, or at least the overlay for that area is zone commercial is my understanding. Uh, they're transitioning from a residential to be consistent with that commercial zone. And I feel like we have an obligation to provide people in that kind of circumstance a set of consistent and fair rules and that we not, um, use our personal opinions about different si- situations in the city, whether it's housing or anything else, to sort of undermine their, their right as, as property owners. Um, and, and in this case, I feel like they have met the criteria that we've established for a commercial zone. It's intended to be a commercial zone and, um, so I, and, and the second thing I'd point out is that that this use that they have allowed for the historic, uh, building to be preserved, which wouldn't have been, uh, possible in all likelihood with a different kind of commercial use. So I'm a definite yes and I encourage other members of the council to also be a yes.
Counselor Peralta, thank you for that clarification and, uh, your, your direction. Uh, let's go over to Counselor Chenoweth. Chris?
Uh, first, I just want to say, uh, well, thank you, Mayor, and very well said, Sal. Um, I, I couldn't agree with you more. The only thing I would add is, you know, that we want to see, uh, we've got an overlay there for a reason. We're wanting that to become commercial. So it seems like we have a business or a, a landowner that's wanting to comply with what our long-term vision was for the area in the first place. It would be a mistake not to take advantage of it when it's presented to us and, and get the code, we have to get the zoning the way we wanted it. So I'm a yes.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adopt, uh, ordinance number 5110.
I moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Sal, seconded by Chris. Uh, I will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Yeah.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
What'd you say? Sorry.
Nay.
Oh, nay.
Counselor Minky?
Yes.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor President Drapkin?
Aye.
Thank you. After the roll call, ordinance number 5110, uh, passes by a vote of five to one. Thank you for the discussion. Uh, with that, uh, we, uh, are to a point at, uh, 9:02 to adjourn our city council and then we will go into an urban renewal agency meeting. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor?
Mayor? I think Amanda and I are thinking the same thing.
We're both on, on it. Um, I think in your script, there is some language about, um, the final decision of the, on the land use decision. Can you read that for the record?
I can. I thought it was a part of if it didn't, it, it didn't pass. So, uh, uh, it's not going to be 9:02 when we conclude our meeting, but, uh, these are decisions of the Portland City Count, uh, City Council and our final decisions of the city of McMinnville unless appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. These decisions may be appealed to the, uh, Land Use Board of Appeals by filing notice with the Land, uh, Use Board of Appeals within 21 days from the date, uh, written notice of this decision is made, mailed to those who have standing. Okay, thank you. And now at 9:03, we will adjourn our city council and, uh, move into our urban renewal. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call, uh, the city council urban renewal agency meeting to order. It is February 8th, 2022 and, um, I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Garvin?
Here.
Counselor Geary?
Here.
Counselor Minky?
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Still present and accounted for.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Counselor President Drapkin?
Here.
And Chair Hill?
Here. Uh, before us tonight, we have resolution 2022 dash one, a resolution of the Urban, uh, McMinnville Urban Renewal Board approving the annual financial report for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency for fiscal year ending, uh, June 30th, 2021 as per revised statute, uh, 457 dot 460. We'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present. Heather?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council in your role as urban, the Urban Renewal Agency Board members. Um, we do need to move through a process of, uh, accepting an annual financial report, but before we do so, I wanted to acknowledge that Walt Gell, who is the Chair of the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, is also here with me this evening. Um, so you heard this earlier today about the audit and, and the, uh, annual report that comes out of that, that process. This is a different annual report that is required by, uh, state statute, what we call our urban renewal state statute, ORS 457. And what it is, it's really an opportunity for the agency to, to report on the specifics of what it's done. And then also, um, the, how the urban renewal tax increment revenue, um, the foregone revenue that the overlapping taxing districts, um, uh, report on that to them as well. So if you remember with urban renewal, when a district is established, on the date of adoption, uh, the urban renewal taxes are frozen. We have a frozen base and, and so those taxes continue to go to the overlapping taxing districts. So all the different taxing districts collecting taxes on those properties continue to collect them at that level. But any additional increment above that over the lifetime of the district go to the urban renewal agency to fund projects, to make improvements in that district and presumably increase the tax base considerably. So it is important every year to, to report to the taxing districts what we're doing and what the impact to them is. Uh, so that's what the annual report goes through. I'm going to share it with you and walk you through it fairly quickly. And then I think Walt has a few comments that he would like to make as well. Um, it looks like I don't have, oh, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, I'm hoping you can see my slide.
We can't, Heather.
Oh, nuts. Okay, let me try again.
There we go.
Okay. I'm in my office and it doesn't always work as well in my office. Okay, so just to remind you, we have the baker's dozen of projects. These are the approved projects in the plan and what the funds are meant to, to fund. And so this is what the Urban Renewal Agency is working on. Um, we have 30, it took 30 years of maximum deadness in which to make these projects happen. The numbers you see there in terms of the urban renewal amounts, that's the assigned numbers that are actually in the plan and they escalate with inflation every year. And then this is the timeframe and when it was estimated these projects would take place. So we've been working off this plan for the last, it was adopted in 2013, so for the last eight years and moving forward as described, um, here in the, in the, uh, timeframe. The McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee was appointed to administer and, and manage this for the, the Urban Renewal Board and, and recommend, make recommendations too on how to move the plan forward. They work off of a five-year strategic plan. This is that plan and it walks through the different projects that they want, that they're going to work towards and fund over the, over the next five years. We're in year 2021 right here. And if you can see, the last five years of focus has really been on this development assistance program right here. So that's providing loans and grants to private development. That's to get tax base on the ground, to create that tax increment, to fund the larger public improvements that are further in the plan. The next big public improvement is the Third Street Improvement Project, which we're working on right now. And the goal has always been 30% construction documents by 2022. Uh, so we're working towards that and with the help of the city, um, with the ARPA funds, we should be able to get there. And then just recently, we added this housing development strategy in the last two years. Um, and we've been, uh, setting aside money to do a downtown master plan. It's been delayed, uh, for a couple of years as, as some pieces are working through the system as to, there's a lot chessboard pieces out there right now for the downtown. And what we want to do is, uh, gather everyone together and talk about where the best opportunities in the future for housing and office development and things like that. So this is the project, the five-year strategic plan and what's been funded into those projects over the years. So you can see development assistance has been the primary project that we've been funding. This is the year we're going to be talking about tonight with the annual report. And you can see all the efforts went into the property assistance during 20 fiscal year, uh, June 30th, 2021. And that was because we were actively working on a business recovery facade improvement grant during COVID. Business Recovery Facade Improvement Grant during COVID. We wanted to get funds out there to help businesses and property owners, and also keep contractors employed, the smaller contractors. And so the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee put together a very aggressive improvement grant and worked through awarding 31 of those to downtown, to both Northeast Gateway District and downtown property owners and business owners. So a very successful program. This is what we're working on this year, and then this is the proposed budget for next year that they just walked through. So the annual report itself, it's very specific in the statute as to what we need to report on in this annual report. And after you accept it, we'll send it directly to the administrators of the overlapping taxing districts. But it shows how much we're collecting in property taxes. So what is the tax increment that we're collecting per year? So in this last fiscal year, we collected $399,000. And then this is all the resources, so the money that's coming into the district. This is interest in common funds that we have in the bank and some miscellaneous funds as well. I always am asked the question, how are we trending relative to our forecast for tax increment, especially with the new development that we're seeing happen in the Northeast Gateway District and the downtown? And so typically, we'll put this together for MIRAC as well. I wasn't able to do it this year for them, but I did do this for you tonight. And what it walks through is, you'll see, when we first put the Urban Renewal Plan together, we had this low-growth scenario and medium-growth scenario, and it was based on what we thought would happen. And they were fairly aggressive numbers, but with a wide swing. So if you look at this forecast for the fiscal year we're in right now, it forecasted $400,000 in tax increments, low growth, and $1 million as medium growth. That's a pretty big swing. And then when we adopted the Urban Renewal, I'm assuming the committee said, no, maybe we need to go back and look at that a little bit and do some truth testing on it. And so the Urban Renewal Report that was adopted landed in the middle of these two growth scenarios in terms of the forecast, and we have to adopt a forecasted financial feasibility analysis to show how much money we think is going to come in so we can actually afford the projects that we talked about. And so that was adopted in 2014. Then when we did the Alpine Avenue project, we moved quicker on that than originally anticipated to take advantage of the opportunity to partner with the city's transportation bond for that project. And so we wanted to look at the forecast to understand how it was impacting it, because now we have this annual debt we have to pay off with those funds that we collect every year, and whether we'd be able to move forward with another project and when we would be able to do it. So we did what we call a city reset, when we made the decision on that bond, and really looked at what was happening with the increment that was coming in. So you see those numbers here. And we reset it for the lifespan of the Urban Renewal Plan. So this is our actuals of what we're collecting right now. And you can see, they're fairly similar to the reset that we did. And good thing we did the reset, because they're lower than this adopted report that we had in 2014, and substantially lower than the medium-growth scenario. There's been a lot of dialogue about what's it going to look like for the end of this year and also next year because of some larger projects like First Federal that are in the district. And what's interesting is, because our tax assessor assesses projects while they're under construction, the assessed value comes on incrementally into the rolls of the project that spans over a couple of years. And so we forecasted $520,000 for the end of this fiscal year. I was just looking at the numbers, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we're at $487,000 right now that we've collected thus far. And tax payments still will trickle in a little bit, and then we're forecasting $598,000 for next year. So we, right now, are looking at actuals of about $2.5 million, a little over that, because there were some fiscal years in front of this that we were collecting funds. But if you look at when we originally forecasted and what our adopted report is, that was twice as much as what we're actually doing. So doing this reset was important, because it helps us manage the plan a little bit more effectively. We do feel with this collection that we're still on par to be able to bond for the Third Street project in a couple of years as planned in the plan. So we look at that every year. In the annual report, we do need to do money expended and what we're spending the money on. So as you can see, in the last fiscal year, as I explained, it's mostly in this Development Assistance Program. We do charge administration, so 25% of my time is charged into the Urban Renewal Agency for staff support. And then we also are paying off the bond for, this is the debt service number right here, $187,000 for the Alpine Avenue bond. We have to show what our long-term debt obligations are in this annual report. So right now, we just have the Alpine Avenue bond, so this is the payment structure for that. And then we have to, maximum indebtedness is very important in Urban Renewal, so this is the maximum amount of money that the agency can incur for debt to make sure that there's a stop somewhere down the road for the overlapping taxing districts. So our maximum indebtedness in this plan is $30 million. And currently, we've done a little over, we've done about $2.9 million, so we have $27.1 million left of our maximum indebtedness. So it's still a young plan, and we're still in the infancy of our projects. And then the last piece that we report on is the impact to the taxing districts. And so this is the place where, you know, if you're a taxing district, you're looking at this. Now, this isn't revenue that they would have necessarily gotten if the agency didn't exist. It's considered forgone revenue. So if you think of the projects that we've come in and sort of incentivized to happen, so I'm thinking of like the Boutique Retreat on Ninth and Alpine, and Greenery Row on 11th and Lafayette, those are projects that had funds from the Urban Renewal Agency to help them get off the ground and get them incentivized. So the premise is, we're doing a lot of that work, so a lot more tax bases hitting the ground. And when we leave the district, these overlapping taxing districts will be collecting a lot more money than they would have otherwise in that same year. But they do want to see this cumulative amount. And the most impacted district is the City of McMinnville. The McMinnville School District itself isn't individually impacted by $134,000. They're funded through the state school fund. So the state school fund is impacted overall statewide by all the Urban Renewal Agencies. And then that's sort of adjusts the state school fund, and then they distribute per student to the different school districts. So really, the McMinnville Urban Renewal Program, because we're so young and our maximum indebtedness is pretty low, we're nominal impacted in that. There are many Urban Renewal districts and plans that have maximum indebtedness of $100 and some odd million dollars as they're working through projects and things of that nature, and collecting tax increments over a couple million dollars annually. So that's the annual financial report. We do have to bring it to you. You do have to take action to accept it. Then I will notice it in the paper that we have done this, and we will send it off to the administrators of each overlapping taxing district.
Thank you, Heather, for that presentation. Let's turn it over to the council for council discussion or questions. And Walt, do you have anything that you'd like to share as the Chair of MIRAC?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. As Heather noted, we are a young Urban Renewal District, only about 10% of the way through a process of renewing the downtown area and expanding the downtown area in McMinnville. Nevertheless, we've had a very busy past year. As Heather noted, we did about 31 building facade and many grants totaling up to about $148,000 of assistance to local businesses. And that was a busy year for the committee, considering all those applications which came in, three or four, one, two, three or four at a time at every meeting. So we were busy doing that. The committee observed, as did the council, I'm sure, that there were three major construction projects on Main Street that were completed during this past year, those being the First Federal Project, the Taylor Dale Project was completed, and also the demolition and reconstruction of the building next to the Taylor Dale Building. Those were major steps forward on Third Street, resulting in a stronger business environment, and of course, a stronger tax base to the district. There are about four ongoing construction projects that are either just beginning or getting close to completion on the Granery Row area, the Granery District and Alpine Avenue. And those are, that's a very exciting result of the investment that this board put into that area in connection with the reconstruction of Alpine Avenue. The committee is supporting and many members of the committee are participating on the Third Street Advisory Committee, which was established by this council, to move forward the major Third Street project. It's part of the Urban Renewal Plan. That is focusing on reconstruction on a 100-year parameter of downtown water lines, sewer lines, storm drainage, an expansion of the sidewalks to make it more flexibility for the businesses in the downtown core. I think we were all impressed by the ability of the downtown to adapt during this COVID circumstance to use of the sidewalks and the streets. And I want to see that project continue to make that more possible. Also, part of the planning process, which is seriously ongoing right now, is consideration of long-term tree replacement and the tree program downtown, as well as maximization of parking for the businesses and the people that are coming to visit downtown, and what the impacts of the Third Street project will be and how those will be mitigated, and/or hopefully, we will end up with more parking than we have now. But that's a process that is ongoing. At our last MIRAC meeting, we allocated $5,000 for special professional consulting to look specifically at the Third Street downtown parking issues related to different configurations that the committee is looking at. I want to express the appreciation of MIRAC for the strong support shown by the council with regard to the ARPA funds dedicated to the downtown project. I think that puts McMinnville in an extremely strong position to compete effectively for other forthcoming federal infrastructure funds that can be utilized as a part of the Third Street project to make it as much as it can be and to get everything done so we don't end up with a piecemeal project. And with that, I would conclude my comments and take any questions the council might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. Any questions for Heather or Walt, and any discussions that you might have as a council before we move forward? Looks like you both have done a very great job of articulating what you needed to do. Seeing no further discussion, I ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-01.
Second.
It has been moved by Kelly and seconded by Sal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2022-1 passes unanimously six to zero. Thank you for this presentation this evening. Thank you for your attentiveness during our meetings this evening. We went through quite a bit tonight. It is now 9:23, and I adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.